Hey, who's this on the red team? Deewee! Deewee! You're the sound director? Why you... Why you shooting someone airball? Why you shooting someone airball? You all see the rim, man? Charlie, the red team have Shama, Deewee and Lemmy. But Hendrix, Hendrix alone, I'm gonna for them.
Yes, so, again, good evening to everyone. I want to say thank you to the Peabush Village Council for partnership with us so that we could have a basketball game here today. The Diasporus versus the local team. I want to thank Lemmy for helping to organize. I also have to say a big shout out to our main sponsor, that is Kid, that is Dion's company, in Tautula. Card, sorry, it's Card. Um, for sponsoring, the shirt sponsoring the event. Um, M O News is also a sponsor. As you know, later on, we will have the Caribbean Cowboys as part of the entertainment. So again, I want to thank everybody for their support. That was all part of our activities for our 25th wedding anniversary. And so I hope you will have fun. Those on my committee, people like Leira and all the others who helped to organize the events. We want to say again, a big shout out to you. But more importantly, for you, the community, that has shown a great level of support. I want to thank you, and I hope we are going to have some fun. I hope my boys are going to win. And they must be according to our big sponsor. Brigidi, I turn the mic to you Brigidi. Me and Charlie on the side. All the way. Alright. We getting ready to start. You know how to do it? Come on, the coach. Okay, the blue coach here is IB. And Bryson is the red coach. Bryson is the coach for red. IB, you ready? Charlie, but I see one referee. He shot. Adel. Yeah, guys. Let me see you make that shot, man, come on. Do it, do it. You remind me should play run down then. Yes, yes, yes. Yes, he missed your run down style on air. Alright, we gonna jump the ball, we gonna jump the ball, get ready, guys. Once again, big up to the blue team and the red team. We gonna put on a good show. Let me see who have more skills.
Good evening, everyone. We are live in Peabush for a basketball march between the Diasporus and the local guys.
No go spend shooting a bunch of frees on all you can make it. Lily, you alright? Good job, good job, good. Well, you looking good, you looking good in your uniform, you looking good. We are ready! Yeah, man. Big up to Adel, the referee in the building. And then we have Kalid dribbling down. In the corner, what a bad pass. And the left, red ball. Score is right there. Down to the point guard. Moving the ball around, Deewee in the center. Yes, we looking good. And then, we got a good three pointer shot there. Oh, what a good move, what a good move, what a good move, what a good move. Great move. We have the point guard Dion coming down with the ball. Looking for his center, what a bad pass. Guys, my Dallas Spurs, we need to do better. My Hendrix in the city ball, man. Alright. Come on, Carlo, show them what you can do, man. Oh, what another bad pass. Gonna take one, guys. Down in the red. Ah, good job, good job, good job. Oh, here goes the line, here goes the star, here goes the star. With the ball in his hands. Oh, yes, what a move. Watch in the middle. Oh, beautiful, what a beautiful move by the Dallas Spurs. What a beautiful move by the Dallas Spurs. Back, down to the red. We gotta defend better, guys. 21 away. Down, yes. They looking good, they looking good, what a good pass. Oh, he goes Deewee for a three pointer, miss. Back. Oh, we have the coach screaming at his players. Ah, not looking too good. Oh, what a move back. Paulie, 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 done. But anyway, back to the red. All hook. Ah, no. Yes, rebound. Oh, Carlo, he gonna take a dunk.
Oh, come on! Go, come on!
We have the three stars on this. Oh, help, so, stay there one more time. Dribbling down. Three pointer. Oh, great job. Pass it on to the king. Ah, we have the point guard. Oh, that's a bill cut, that's a bill cut right shot right there. Yeah. Let's go, let's go, we gotta defend better. Hey, what a block, oh, get over here, man. Good shot, what a blocker, man. Don't take up the Dallas Spurs, man. Coco, did you see Bill Cut right, Coco? Yeah. Oh, what a shot, ah. Yeah, we going down with the blue. To our point guard. Our point guard looking good, he looking good. Ah, what a bad pass, guys. Guys, we gotta make great pass. Coach, coach, what are you doing? Are you calling a timeout? Hey, come on, coach. It look like the red getting tired fast. Yeah, 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 that man, that man have no energy, no energy. Very near. Yeah, guys. We call them low energy, low energy. Let's go, blue! Back in the point, and the coach is screaming to pass the ball off. And I don't know if they could hear him. Coach IB, boy. Yes. Coach IB is on point. Oh, what a shot. Great, great move, great move. Oh, Hendrix on. I tell you, Hendrix is on fire! We have Hendrix is on fire! Hendrix is on fire! Oh my god! Ay, look at that guy. The star is representing who he is. Oh my god. He look tired, you know, Charlie? He looking tired, buddy. He looking tired, buddy. He's doing good, he's doing good. Charlie, get some water for him on the side. We have, we have the point guard controlling the game, we good, we good. Put a bottle of water for Hendrix still. He's, he's in good shape, he's in good shape. Okay, this is so. He's in good shape. He look like blue going in the mabit. Ah, wait, we might have to stop our point guard. I mean, he may. Defense, 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 defense. 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 Up, oh, what a shot, what a shot. Wait, 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 give it up to the red team. What's the score, 4-4? We are tied, we are tied. The blue looking good. The blue point. Yeah, with the blue moving the ball much better. Just give the red a ball. 10 more minutes, we have, we have a lot of. Hendrix on the ball, watch Hendrix. Eyes off! What do you have to say? It's a foul! What do you have to say, it's a foul? It's a foul! Oh, yes. Anything for Hendrix on him. Charlie, you have to remember, Hendrix taking for Hendrix job. I, I think that was a flop, but we don't accept it as a flop. Okay, okay, referee, why you not, why you not on him? It's a flop, it's a flop, but. Why you not on referee? We'll take it, we'll take it, ref. And then you have to remember Hendrix. I have seen it. Bill Cut, Bill Cut, oh my god! Oh my god, Hendrix trouble to you. Hendrix, you gotta close your eyes, close your eyes. Okay, that's for the next one. We put the next one. Hendrix at the ball. One out of two, Hendrix. And up, and up, and up. Oh, Hendrix! IB, you have to watch Hendrix go. Up in the hole, up in the hole. Great rebound by Hendrix. Great offensive rebound. Oh, this guy, this guy, this guy a lot of energy. Take it to your point guard. This guy have a lot of energy. Your point guard right here. Oh! Red is in trouble! By the lockout! I'm telling you, that's a lockout! That's a lockout! Okay. Yes, red is in trouble. Bryson, your team is in trouble. Our, our point guard looking better, he's doing much better. Look at to that guy there. He have a lot of energy. Oh my god, what a move, what a move, what a pass. Oh my, Dion looking young, Dion look my, oh, looking like he young by Dion. Great rebound by Hendrix. Charlie, why you mean about Dion? Alright, we might, we might have to stop our point guard, he's looking old. No, my Dion doing, the edge, the edge hitting him, the edge hitting him. The edge hitting him. The edge hitting him. Edge hitting him. Oh, what a shot, what a shot, what a shot, what a shot! Oh, oh my. Hendrix at the job! I think it's our ball, blue ball, yes. All the way, blue. Oh, referee doing a good job, referee doing a good. I telling you, Adel on point. Yes, yes, he's on point with everything. Adel is on point. Boy, we have, we have red stopping on him. We say a baby hard on this side, guy. Bryson in the stand up, Bryson in the stand up. Deewee moving hard. Hey, get them a cool hot water, boy. Five five. Did you remember y'all win tomorrow? Up, up. Oh, he's in fire! All the way with the blue! A great shot by blue, man. Telling you. Yes, that was a great shot, IB, that was a great shot. Dig up to IB, dig up to IB. Well done, coach! Well done, coach! Our coach drinking rum, but. Well done, coach! Hendrix at the ball. Looking for the free, looking for the free, looking for the free. Oh, well done! Good shot, good shot. Looking for the free. Ah, it's fine, Hendrix. Why, Hendrix? Hendrix anything like a. Hendrix like a bulldog. Yeah, really, once you see Hendrix, you think you afraid to shoot. Hendrix like a bulldog. Yeah, the guy is unstoppable. Remember, M O have it live, live on M O! Yes. Don't forget to get your drinks at the bar. Get your chicken, get your meats. Yes, he on point. Alright. Back, you back. You gotta watch Shama, you know. Pass, what a pass, what a pass. You gotta watch on Shama, jump, big jump, big jump. This guy is good, you know, great job. This guy is great. Shama is great, see, you have to watch him. Hendrix! Hendrix looking tired. Coco was a wonder, Hendrix. Oh, yeah, we, we need to stop Hendrix. I think he's, he's looking like he needs, he needs some, some flowy. Yes, yes. Well done, buddy. Oh, big pass, boy, by the blue! Up, up. Good passes, guys, good. Oh, this guy, he is. Move around. What, what, your move? Look like they been watching the Warriors, man, they been. I telling you. Really good. Oh, Shama is, Shama is on fire! Coach, when you on timeout? Shama is on fire! When you on timeout, coach? Yeah, Shama is on fire, we do that, we all know that. We need to stop, guys, we need to, we need to.
On behalf of M O News, we say thank you all for joining us, we will be right back.
Uh, we have a dog, we have a dog, pray, do it.
We are experiencing some technical difficulties, and we are trying to rectify the issue, so we will be.
Okay, this is, you can hear the blue? You can hear the blue? Hey, we have cheerleaders for the blue now. When you run cheerleaders now? They don't, they don't have nothing, no? Alright, yeah. They on the side there. Good shot, good shot, Ashton! Yes, a shot, yes! What a shot, yeah! Very good shot! Oh, I tell you, tonight, tonight gonna be a challenge. Also, you look like. Tonight, guys. No, no, I said what's in the blue. You look like Steph Curry. I ain't going nowhere, man, blue all the way. You look like. Hendrix at the last, dude. Hendrix couldn't look up tonight. We need some more free pointers like that. Boy, tonight, there's a trouble, Charlie. That's who, that's who? Oh, Brody James! Charlie, Charlie calling scores. That's Brody James! Come on, man. Charlie, all the scores. Ay. They need to know the scores, see. We have a timeout, we have a timeout. I think they, they could try to get somebody. Charlie, you need to see the scores. Let them know the scores, Charlie. Oh, the blues, we, we are destroying them, we are. We looking good, we looking good. I telling you, I telling you, things looking good there. Yeah. You see, see the red, they making noise with each other. I believe, I believe Coach Bryce has done a good job. He's doing a good job. Yeah, he starts slow, and I picking up now. Okay, good, okay. Yeah, Coach Bryce has done a good job. Oh, he adding, he adding another coaching staff. Coco, Coco, yeah, yeah, yeah. A better run, yeah, yes. I think that might help them. Coco? Coco might help them. Coco, Coco making too much noise. Alright, or something, you have to make noise with your players, you know. IB! We have a coach making noise, we have a coach drinking rum, which one you want? I mean, I don't know. Choose one, choose one. But the coach are drinking rum, his players playing that way, so. IB drinking rum, boy, nice move, man. Oh, okay. Yes, well done, buddy, referee, Adel! Things looking good, things looking good in Peabush. We have to eat! In favor, oh, Dallas Spurs, Dallas, oh, Dallas Spurs. In favor, oh? We have, we have one Dallas Spurs that we need to have him on the bench for a period of time. Leave, leave, I think he lost his energy. Hendrix. I'm not calling him, no. I believe Hendrix. No, why? I didn't call, no, no. Hendrix, you get some more of the drink? Okay, you see. Hendrix, you want that rum? Ay, not, not right now, not right now. You score, Hendrix, if you give me a three pointer, I'll bring you a rum on the side. And not, not any rum, eh? I'll put in a bottle of water. Not any rum! Alright, getting ready to start. Hey, coach blue, how we looking? Look, IB, IB. I'm gonna walk over and interview the coach. Okay, I can see IB checking his, his players. Checking his. I'm gonna walk over and interview the coach. Coach, how you think your players looking right now?
Like a plate of food.
Okay, 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 okay. IB on point, you think your, you think your stars can do a little better?
Those of you joining us now, we are live in the community of Peabush. And as you know, Peabush celebrated Christmas in a huge way. And today, we are ending this celebration with a basketball march. The Diasporus and the Lockouts versus the boys from Peabush. So, it's an exciting evening here at Peabush. Later on, we'll have the Caribbean Cowboy. You still have some time to come over to Peabush, come and, you know, enjoy yourself, come and enjoy your ambience. Come and see, you know, what Peabush has to offer. A very lively and, you know, beautiful community. You can see the amount of people already here in support of this game.
Okay, back to the game now. Great, great, so, we back to the game, alright, good luck. Yes, Charlie, you get over here. Well done, Coach Bryce, huh? Yes, yes, he's doing a good job. I'm telling you. Oh, the blue, game, oh, the blue, game, nah. Passes the ball, you gonna give him the ball, the ball. Look for him, man, look for his player. Dribble the ball, look for his player. Let's pass the ball! Oh!
Dribbling! Hey, say! We need a birthday!
Oh, yes! Charlie, he look like he going around, but not there. Yes! Yes! Oh, what a pass, boy, what a pass, man! Oh, Charlie, the blue. Oh, my god! Charlie, you need to see that pass. Oh my god, Charlie, you need to see that pass. Things getting good here, down here. Things getting good here. Hey, bringing it to the, here the cheerleaders for the Diasporus. I'm telling you, this, this stuff is good. It's good, but. I have some exciting thing over there, man, and I don't give it to you after lose. I think it's killing the red. I'm telling you, oh my god, this guy, you better. Oh, what a shot! It's all, I tell you, anybody referee is there. It's going from 20. And if you want a referee, I'm gonna know. Why you, that's the rest call what you can see, you know? Charlie, I don't give you one referee, I'm gonna know. They need to stop crying because this game is gonna get tense.
Oh. So those of you joining me, we are live in Peabush. Exciting basketball game, the Diaspora versus the local boys.
IB, I can see IB telling them, settle the game. IB saying, settle it down. He look like he hear you, he hear you, alright. Keep a glass in his hand. What a shot, what a shot, what a shot, what a shot. We are. Dallas Spurs, we gotta, we gotta. Ready, we gotta, we gotta defend better than. Charlie, the red is picking up. Yes. Charlie, the red is picking up. Yes. Holy, the blue supporting. Oh my god, the blue look like they tired. Oh, the blue look like they tired. The coach, I think they doing some stuff. Uh, you can, you can take him in by one dunk, I think. Oh, what's that, it's 20-11. It's enough. 20-11. I don't think they got a guy in there. Oh my god, they found him. You need to worry Shama, girls. You need to worry Shama, I'm telling you.
Jesus! 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 Jesus!
Alright.
Let's go, red! 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 Let's go, red!
Alright.
Let's go, red! Let's go, red! Let's go, red!
Oh, no. Hey, guys, I'm here, and let's go, blue! Look, not tell me somebody in blue. Not somebody in blue. Yes, not call my ears. You don't have to. Not call my ears, and tell me, make it into somebody in blue. That's, I, I like to hear that, I like to hear that. Let me, let me talk to some friends out there and ask them what they think. Okay.
Nice, 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 nice. Yo, 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 Mike, my boy.
Let's go, red, let's go, let's go! Let's go, boys, let's go, let's go, let's go, boys! Let's go, boys!
Hendrix!
Come on, come on!
Last guy. Ali's in solid. Charlie, you last.
What is it, Tara?
It's end!
Bryson!
Let's go, blue! Let's go, Tara!
Bryson!
Block him! Come on, blue, wake up, wake up! Let's go, blue! Come on, blue! Let's go, blue! Charlie!
Come on, come on!
Block it!
Yes!
Let's go, blue! Let's go, blue!
Oh, block him up, I'm glad, block him up!
Block him! Backside! Let's go! Let's go, blue!
Andrew, easy!
Make the shot, man!
Oh my god! Help him somebody here!
Oh, yeah, yeah!
Pass the ball, take the shot! Come on, make the shot, guys! Shot! Make it, Hendrix, shot, easy shot! Easy! Come on, man! This way!
Charlie! Let's go, let's go! Yeah, Charlie, let's go! No one ready! You know why? Yeah, listen, you come out there and come there. Let's see you talking louder.
That's a flop, that's a flop! Adel, I tell you, a foul, where the flop? That's a flop! He fake, Charlie, I didn't even fake it now, yes, it's a flop. I didn't even fake it now, I saw him, I saw him. But we watching M O. M O have it live. Where's the, where's the replay? M O, we need a replay. We need a replay. M O, we need a replay on Lennon. Oh, flop, that's a flop. Lennon, don't go there. M O, we need a replay on Lennon. I need some security, put out some fans. Oh, he looking like, he looking like he ready. He ready to overtake the blue. Now, we, we, we bombs back, we bombs back, okay, okay, we bombs back. But I ain't moving, I ain't, all the way, blue. It's nothing, it's nothing. All the way, blue. We gotta, we gotta play better. IB need to make some more so. You see, I. We gotta rebound, we gotta rebound. We got to rebound. The last guy need to be on the ball. IB! The last guy need to be on the, eh, eh, on the court. We, that cheer, that red cheerleader there, we might have to put outside. If, we, we might have to put that, we might have to put that cheerleader outside. Please, 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 on the side, on the side, yes. Charlie, these scores look like. Guys, if I leave to you, oh my god, 20, 11, no, 20 to 11. IB need to blue work.
Lots of excitement here in Peabush. If you are not in Peabush, this night, you are really actually missing out. You have time to come over tonight, we have the Caribbean Cowboy. Come and enjoy yourself down in Peabush.
No, 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 you see, because when he started the run, we only need. Why? Because he didn't drink from it yet. Once he start drink, and the score went. That's, so that means. Yeah, no more run, no more run, no more run. No more run, no more run! You need some water! Need to focus! Yes, I need him to focus, very bad! Let's go Blue, let's go! Defense, defense! Defense, defense! Defense, defense! Defense, defense! Defense, bro! Let's go, let's go Hendrix! Yes! Let's go Hendrix! The blue looking like they got back on track! Get back the energy! The blue looking like they get back the energy! Oh my god! What a bad pass, man! What a bad pass, man! Coach Shamatayara, he do so! Guys, you have a good day, so! How, how guys continue?
That game's standing ready! He had more, he had more!
Guys, you have a good day, so! They're not saying, they're not saying? Guys, 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 guys! We have to swing now! We are going to... Give me, Charlie! I do, I do! Are you calling the picture? No, no! So, first African, who should I present to the rapport? Thank you, I didn't even say something about the game! So, what? What do you think about the game? Oh yes! That's a good response, that's a good response! I believe, I believe the blue are going to win, yeah! We are the cherry! The cherry, the cherry! I think, I think people in here, probably want to... Go on, go on, run, 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 Charlie, run, run! I, what? I get my people on the team, so... We gotta hear their voice better, I think they need that energy! The blue need that energy for support! So, you guys gonna say defense, man, you know? Let's go! Defense! Defense, defense! Defense, defense! We need to do, to do, to do better! Okay, okay! Charlie, she is, Charlie, she is right! She's right, yeah, because they don't rest it for a while! And every, every night, your team in the arena on the court! Guys, we got thirty-one seconds to go for half-time! We gotta get some points! Charlie, I believe she is right! Because those guys in the red train, every night, every night in training! Oh my god! Not about defense, Charlie! Hold the ball, guys! Charlie! Yes! I'm gonna count up the time for you! Yes, yes! We need to get better, we need to get better! Yes, don't forget to get... Support the band, get your drinks, get your breaths, get your... Rest? Can I see your time? So I can count up the time? Other times, Charlie, other times, they... We have seven seconds to go for the half! Seven seconds for the half! Oh yes! I think the blue, remember the scores, um... Twelve, they'll be... I said it's because I want you to do better! So... You guys ready? Seven seconds to go! Charlie, you turn around free!
Yes, yes, yes! If you are not in Peabus tonight, for this... Basketball action, you are missing out!
Let's go Blue! So, ref! What the ref saying? What the ref was saying? Take big foul! What the ref was saying, Charlie? It's half-time! Charlie! That's a foul, that's a foul! All our guys, that's a big, big foul! The ref said, we can play now? She can, she won two hours! You hear my child, one is not enough! Because that's a big, big foul! It's okay, it's okay, she's doing job! She's doing her job! That's why we hire her to do her job! Coco, yes, everything, Coco! Right now, it's half-time! It's half-time! Okay, DJ, we gonna do just now! They're trying to sit down, we're waiting now! Discuss all your mistakes! And... Charlie! This happy, this fun, this way! Charlie, we gonna play some music! Next time! Alright, okay, guys, 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 guys! Let's do it, let's do it, guys! It's a good time!
So the Peabus locals are singing "We Shall Not Be Moved"! They are here to support the local boys! Who will emerge champions tonight? And these are the local boys! So they are getting ready for the second half! And, uh... This was sponsored by Card! Um, Card Pool and Services, along in Totoa! So if you have a pool and you need a service, you can contact Card! Our telephone number, two eight four four nine five... Eight zero three zero! Yes, yes, yes! My Slane Andrew Allen! Twenty-fifth wedding! Anniversary celebration, and it is being called a max! With a basketball game! Uh, Lockout! And the Diasporous versus the Local Boys! Hi! And the score, twelve to twenty-five! We are also on YouTube, check out Emo News! Via YouTube to, you know, to watch this game as well!
Charlie! Yes, DJ Aron! Super, super! We love it, bro, we love it, bro! Yes! We love it, bro! Charlie, where you? Where you at? And people, please, tell the fans! Get a lady, start with the forget! Yo, Coca-Cola water! Get a plate, right there, Charlie! Get a lady, start, I'm thinking, bro! Pablo, Pablo! Have some nice Coca-Cola water, man! Okay? I think if you wanna go to Sasha! And I say you go, bring something, you go to Pablo! Check Pablo for your Coca-Cola water! We gotta get, 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 yeah! Man, that's about this, really, yeah, dude! As I said, I'm gonna shoot, like, DJ Aron! I'm not happy about, I'm sorry, but please, look at that jump there, oh, oh, oh! Coach, beat the girl! Charlie! Yes, yes! I'm gonna watch the referee, yeah, man! I, I, I have a discussion, with the manager, we think, ah... We got a foul, folks, tomorrow! We got a shot in our... We got a record, yes! We gonna have, we gonna tomorrow! How much money is it, man, man? How much money? David? Uh, I'm sure, I'm with two hundred! Two hundred? Yes, two hundred! Ah, guys, we start, two hundred, two hundred, let's start! Charlie, P L O, we have three hundred! Four hundred? And P L O, a hundred! Try to check, I'm on... You're too late, thanks to see the ball, so! We have a shot! We have a shot! So, Charlie, I check out, seven hundred and... Seven hundred and fifty! Seven hundred and fifty! My coach! Everything that go wrong tonight, I've been fired, my coach! I related to all these last day! Look like this is why they run! Yes! You coaching wrong! That's what we doing, right? Okay, right, right, this is the guy! Yeah, this is the referee, like a referee! Everybody, having a good time? DJ, hold on, yeah, hold on, DJ! DJ, hold on! Thank you, hold on, thank you, hold on! How do you... How you gonna get a drink, though? You gonna get a drink? Hey, give out our drink! We are shooting, coach, the coaches look late! Charlie, we have a new referee! Oh, yes, yes! And that referee, eh, is a team! I think it's gonna make a big difference for the Diasporous! Because they know, they've been following us a lot! Coco, for a man! He do, he do, he do, he do, I did, I did it for a man, we did it for a man! Oh my goodness, my goodness, my goodness! I'm not looking for a... Oh, let's go, go, let's go, go! Alright, let's go Blue! I know what you do! Let's go Blue! Yeah, my team! Yes, yes! You have a fan? Let's go Blue! Let me see, let me see your trust, man, my coach, man!
Let's go Blue! Greenhouse!
Alright, we got, we got a foul, we got a foul! We got a foul on the second! I mean, oh, Coco changing! That was, that was a foul by Coco, Coco didn't see that! Call it, I know! I know, I know! Call it, I know! I don't know if Coco see that! Referee, I know, is a point, I'm telling you! Yes, it's... Let's go, let's go Blue, let's go Blue! Watch it, Red Bull! And put it in the hole! Don't, 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 hold it! Watch the ball and put it in the hole! Hey, I need all... I need all red fans to go more in the corner, the coach where he cannot see! That is true, that is true! Yes, that is true! In the hole! In the hole! On the two, on the two, on the two! All, all the red fans, go further back where you cannot see, dude! At the back of the building, yeah! They're too long! They're too long! Defense! Yes, yes! Defense, hear it? We looking good! Any crew over there, Charlie? Any crew over there? Remember, those dog at the Coca-Cola water, Pablo have the Coca-Cola water! Yes! You referee that came, we looking good! We looking good! Shamada! He pretended! He, he's tired already, you know, he just start, he tired already! Charlie, what? Charlie, what? Why you just walk down? Why you say, why you say about Hendrix in that second half? I think he's gonna do better, he's gonna do better! He has some water! Why you not stupid, don't forget now? Open! Yeah, please, uh... What? The game just started, you know? I can't hear the comment! Don't disappoint the Diasporous! Entire, entire shoe is good!
So this game is versus, um... The Diasporous, the returnees that came home for the Christmas! Well, most of them are the Lockout Boys! Versus, um, the Peabush Local Boys!
I think it's on the shoes, it's on the shoes! I'll check, I don't know what you call that! He, he probably never did it, probably! I need stand up straight! You know? We got something, we got something! How you always, man? We got something, we got something! Don't forget, I want Emo! Good things happening in Peabush! Only way we can do! We got a big red fan here with a pocket on! I can't, I can't understand that! And actually, Charlie gave him his side! I think he got four, six, four! But you got, that you have to look in the pocket! Okay, let's go, Charlie, you're not gonna make any one of you! Yes! We got to the game! We move, we move, we move, Charlie! We move in the box! I'm trying to see, cool, Charlie! Let's say! We move in the box much better, I tell you! Yeah, man! I believe every money from Peabush, yeah! Yes, yes! What a great support! Great, great support, Peabush community! Good community! Yes, yes! Let's go, Dion! Let's go, Dion, let's go! This guy, this young guy, yeah! Oh my god! Look at him! David! I see why the Peabush people love you! Oh my god! But many have discussed, anything you do wrong, I commend the party! So... Give us some, give us some, with great shit, you know? Charlie, would you come on basketball? There are a few that are about... We got, we got, if you come and do anything, yeah! Let's start on a topic, we're gonna be partying back to, yeah! Oh my god, Charlie! See, that's a step down, that's a step down! Oh, there's one, okay! But, wait, wait for something, wait for something! Alexis! Alexis! Yes! Alexis! Say something, bro! I didn't give Charlie! I'm surprised, guys! Quick shot! Charlie, see where Cherry go? Oh my god! Charlie! That's a pass! That's a pass, oh, ref! Charlie, watch where Cherry go! Cherry in the next side! Yeah! It's a pass! Charlie, if she get a pass, I think it's not passing, man! Cherry hiding on the next side, oh, oh! Where, where she hiding? At the back! Oh, let's, I need to take that part! Too much noise in my ears! I can't, I can't stand it! She not, okay! She need to, hey, give that part to the Diasporous! Charlie, let it! Okay, back to the basketball! Don't forget to support the band, get your mates, get a chicken, get a drink! Definitely, definitely! Charlie, you tasting good or not? Support the band! And don't forget Pablo, Coca-Cola water! Get some, let's go Blue! 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 I ain't arguing with you! Oh yes! Yeah, what about, what about that? Oh, come on, you make it to a better shot, better shot! But the blue must support us! Defense! Hendrix there! Good job, good job, good! Okay, let's go! I see Dion, Dion watching this, man! Take your time, I go take your time, guys! Looking at me! So, looking like a lion! The blue guys looking like a lion! In the hole! In the hole! Big move by Dion! Oh yes! It look like the blue eyes on the ball! Big move on the looking floor! Yes! Dion, you're getting hard! Anything coming right now! The score is twenty-seven, sixty! Yeah, we looking, we evolve, man! Not by eleven, man! We, we, we evolve, man! That's nothing! Coach Bryce, you looking good! Ivy, you need to step up! Alright! Take your time, guys! Oh, wait, no! Big two, big two! Easy, easy! Easy, but Dion... Dion looking like a good boy! Hendrix, son! I think, I think we will stop! I tell you, we looking for Hendrix! Are we looking for Hendrix? We need to do something, we need to do something! Defense! Defense! Keep going, man! Jerry, come there! No, no, I do foul! Coco here! Coco on point! I know he here! Coco doing a good job, he's doing a good job! I tell you! Coco, we need... That was a stoppage! I didn't remember that! About a lot to me, he knows the game, he knows the game! He knows the game! Pull the string, pull the string! Pull the string, yeah! He knows the game! Jerry! Jerry! Remember I have tomorrow! Hey, Jerry, remember, it's morning even on tomorrow! So, don't, don't go to people next morning! Alright! Good time, good time!
Okay!
Alright, we didn't know, we didn't know who knocks out this game! Yeah, I don't, I don't know who knocks out this game! What, Charlie, tell me, do you see what it? Hey! I think, I think Max up at it! Max up at it, whoever have the ball in there! Max! If you were red, have the ball, he's... If the blue have the ball, it's something, dude! I believe Max, but, it's a, it's a chance, a chance! Oh, it's a chance! Defense! 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 That's what I said! Defense, defense! Hey, what that block from Hendrix? I didn't believe so! Ah, I don't know! I didn't even, okay, Hendrix! He put, he put up his hand, but, I don't know, it was... I didn't even, okay, Hendrix, he put, he put up his hand, but I, I don't know, it was. I think he, he think he was playing, man.
The score is now sixteen to twenty-eight. The local team is twenty-eight and the diaspora sixteen.
Charlie, I need you. Hey, Hendrix. You remember your friend knocking away. Yes, yes. Oh, he, he, he got his own business. We didn't get any chance, we played out the long time. You know, you got it there, you just, you got it there, you just. Defense. That's a call in the morning. Alright, if you see them kicking the ball. Coco. Coach Harvey. Coach Harvey, starting to beat the game. Yes. Great pass, great pass. All of them, Hendrix, pass the ball to anybody. We can reach it, it's on fire. Alright, we have a timeout, we have a timeout. Of course, we can just send people to game. And just start a timeout, are you prepared? You have a timeout, you gotta let the referee go into the start. Charlie, go to the right. And I'm gonna catch you whenever. Don't worry, he's on the chopping block. Alright. This is, okay, then, but the score is, it's a fifty, in favor of Red. We coming down, we coming down. Of course, for sure. One point at a time.
Pick that, don't pick that, come on, don't pick that.
Three two.
Stay up on him, stay up on him.
Oh, my God. I can't move, I can't move. Hendrix has the ball, watch, Hendrix has the ball. Andy, oh, my God, he lose the ball. Yes, he lost, steal the ball. I got, great pass, great pass. In the hole, in the hole. Yeah. What I want to say. In the ball. This is, he's not just ready to go. Oh, I didn't even get ready. I don't think, I don't think, Dian, see the guy. He don't even know how to play, but who's that, Charlie, who's this nigga guy? I, I have no idea. I don't, but you from Peabus, you from Peabus. Yeah, I don't, Charlie, you say you from Peabus. Hey, we have, we have the Red fans in my ears there, let's go, Red.
Let's go Red. Let's go Red. Let's go.
Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely. Charlie, I'm looking at you. My coach, you in the corner, timeout, man.
The, the score, the score is, uh, twenty.
That nigga guy there, that nigga guy there.
Twenty, thirty-four in favor of the local guys.
The, the, the speed missed, I didn't want, I didn't want to know it. Why you? I didn't want to know it. That nigga guy there, quick. Guys, we got, oh, that's defense, defense. Oh, you see what I'm saying? You have nothing to do, Charlie, Charlie, boss, 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 timeout, man. Charlie, the, the, if you go, this guy, for, hard, bro, look at him, he's on the.
Out of boy.
He said, he said, I'm gonna dust it. Charlie, what you say about, Charlie, let's, let's have a minute, that one nigga guy. Charlie, let's have a minute, that one nigga guy. But, Mr. Tufa, I, 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 Shava, Shava is the take. So fast, I don't know who. You don't know who is? Now, my players, see, nigga, you know? Now, my players, see, nigga. We are the best. We're gonna be like, like, Charlie. We're gonna be seen, we're all the way. They got, they got, they got, they got. They got the fans, they got the fans, fans. They got the Peabus. They got the fans, yeah. No, we are, we are much blue. I'm very much blue. All blue, all red, all red blue. If you watch, if you watch all the pretty ladies, it's blue, that's about it. Yes, yes, yes. If you watch all the pretty ladies, it's blue, that's about it.
That's right, that's right.
Everybody, I tell you. Everybody, my big shots.
We shall not be moved.
Let's go to the other one. Let's go to the other one there. Let's go to the other one there. They're holding, they're holding.
We shall not be moved. We shall not be, we shall not be moved. We shall not be moved. Where the point, the point, quiet. I don't think I'm driving, no, you're mad.
I tell you.
Ever, I don't think I'm driving. I don't think I'm back on.
Too much, too much about this, I don't know. This guy, this guy, dude. That's it, you are scared, you are scared. You are scared. Again, Charlie is my gamer. Oh, he got it, Hendrix on him. I think, I think, I think. Yes, it's scary, it's scary. It's scary, it's scary. Oh, okay, okay, okay. It's scary, it's scary, it's scary. If you watch, oh. Oh, my God.
Let's go, Emo.
I tell you. Oh, a foul, watch, Charlie. That was the Dallas Spurs. He don't get the foul. Why he like his, his hand is dealing that now, hey? Hey, look at, Hendrix, send that shade. Hey, look at, are you listen, all your guys don't know, he should have made a red ball, he talking about winning the ball. I tell you, I believe so. Send all the players ahead of time. I believe so, Charlie, oh, good ball, good ball, Hendrix. You need more of that, Hendrix. Hendrix, I believe, you go inside, you get more foul. Charlie, get them fouled. I think they follow this squad, you know, I think it was taken two. That's it, that's it, Hendrix. Oh, look, look at the president. I think, I think they are in points for them. Who's scoring there? I think they were taking two.
The score is twenty-two, thirty-eight.
Hendrix, Hendrix has the ball, and he know, when Hendrix has the ball, it's trouble. Yes, yes. I tell you, when Hendrix has the ball, it's trouble. I tell you, you know, oh, big pass by Hendrix. Nice, big pass by Hendrix, boy. We did a three, actually, yes. Oh, my God. Good shot, good shot, good shot, good shot, good shot. We gotta go back to defense, guys, we gotta go back to defense. Big code, big code, big ball, we love the crowd, we love the crowd. Coming up. Don't forget the bank, don't forget the bank, get some food, chicken. Get some, make your chicken, get your mix, get your drinks. Cold drinks up on the bar. Comes in all the way, we need to do something. We need to support the comes in, so that Peabus could move forward. That's right. Support the comes in, so that Peabus could move forward. We gotta learn to fix, we gotta learn how to fix. Nice, good, they are not playing defense. Don't forget Pablo, Pablo, coconut water, get some coconut water.
Cricket action in Peabus, the diasporas versus the local boys. The score is twenty-two, forty in favor of the local boys.
We need to get them guys some coconut water. I tell you, Pablo, check Pablo. They are low energy, low energy. See that, Charlie? I be the call, I be, Hendrix on the bench. We don't, I be subbing, so what you mean? He ask for us up. Well, he, he, the guy, the guy, low energy, man, low energy. Hendrix ask for us up. Hendrix, guys, we gotta defend, go back and defend. Okay, so for the score. Forty, twenty-two. They doesn't sub, they doesn't sub, they start, they red. I can't understand, Bryce, Bryce. Bryce, you don't sub the little red guy there, come on, man. Did the guy ask, the guy tired? Did the little red boy ask, he's tired? Yeah, man, Bryce, you have one, two, three, four, you have nine guys on the bench, nine guys on the bench. Hendrix, uh, Bryce, you overplayed one player, the red little boy. Subbing. Bad coach, bad coach. Yes. Don't forget to live on ammo news. This guy, Charlie, this guy. Oh, my God, Charlie, this guy give, wow, kick it. He kicking the ball, yeah, he kicking the ball, Charlie, kicking the ball. Good job, bro, good job, good job. But, when I see this, I'm like, I feel it. Good job, bro, good job. He fast, he fast. Yeah, you know, he's soft, this guy is like, bragging. You're not soft, or you're not? Oh, you're not soft? You're not soft. Oh, he don't think that you're not, you know? He don't, no, no, no.
He not, he not soft.
He don't think that you're not.
He not, he not soft.
He think that somebody, he never knew.
He not, he not, he not soft, he's a man, he's a brother.
You're not soft.
Let's go, guys, guys, guys.
Bryce, it's soft, you know, soft, you know, let's get a coach like that. You know, who can coach? Yeah, who can coach, Bryce, it's soft, you know? Oh, give me money, sir, oh, give me money. The man is cool tomorrow. Yes. Yeah, what, that's it, he asked for. Oh, the one person that is passing for him, let me start the ball, you said, why you have the ball, you said? Pass him on, yes. Good job, yes, yes. Yes. Go, I'm gonna hurry up now, right now, back to the game. Back to the game now.
Blue ball. Blue ball.
Ross, you doing a great job, you doing a great job. Originally, we can't do it on the side, but you look like you have your energy.
Let's go, Ash.
But the referee doesn't run, now he just walking. I never see a referee walk. Okay, right now, so, back to the game, Charlie. You see walking like that? What referee see walking, just like that? Come on, man. The guy doesn't run, he doesn't run, he just walking. Alright, Charlie, you see, back to the game now? Alright, alright, yeah, super, super. Super, super, okay, he's soft. Good job, Bryce. Thank you, Bryce. Great job. Boy, that Bryce. Never bring Mister back in the game. Never bring Mister back in the game. Oh, Bryce, over, a three pointer, a, a pointer. Blue has the ball. Blue has the ball. You gotta take out time, make it time. Shoot the ball. And side. Look at this, I tell you, I see him shoot the ball before, and he do. Okay, let's go, back to the game right now. Referee, I'll yell has the ball. Yes, referee, I'll yell has the ball. Other, pass it to the blue. Other, I want to put some. Pass it to the blue. He look at it, he look at it, and he shoot it inside, and he. Right down, you got. You see the referee, oh, he running. The referee is actually running. Pass it to the red, red the ball. Yes, the referee is running, his referee is running. Ready to give them to the ball, Charlie. Oh, yes. Go it down to them, go it down to them. Right now, we got a point guard. Pass it over. Let's pass it. Shoot the ball, pass it to the blue. I go up, I go up. Done by Coach Charlie. Yes, super, Lindy, Red has the ball. Going down to the next one. He has the ball, he bumping the ball, he watching his partner, he dribbling the ball. Oh, my God, he dribbling, oh, that's a big hit. All the ball is on, even for somebody, he pass the ball, dribbling the ball, and he shoot it, and he shoot it. Oh, he missed the ball. Oh, nevermind, blue on the ball. Come down, come down, come down the ball. Let me see what he gonna do. Let me see what blue are, blue has the ball. Look for his partner, look for his dribble ball, hop, and shoot the ball, oh, my God, referee. Referee, referee. Red has the ball, he up on his basket. Defense is very important. We need to play better defense. But we need the referee to open the eyes, Charlie. Yes. We need the referee to open the eye, blue has the ball, Charlie. Oh, come on, the ball, Charlie. Pass the ball, he shoot the ball. Oh, my God, he missed, he missed the whole rim, man. He missed the whole rim, man. Down, boy, what a, what a whole shot by him. Blue has the ball, Charlie. We needed that, we needed that. I tell you. We watch, we watch his partner, this guy is on fire. This guy is on fire. This guy. Charlie, this guy is on fire. We need him, ever, ever let this one lie. Ever get this one on point? Yes. This guy is on fire. The score is looking good.
The score is twenty-eight, twenty-four.
Forty-four. Red has the ball, he bumps the ball, dribble the ball, dribble the ball, dribble the ball, dribble the ball. Oh, my God, so well done, man, any ball. Well done, the pass the ball to the right on, watch, watch the game. Lack of defense on the free point line. Charlie, seventeen seconds to go. Sixteen. Fifteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. Twelve. Eleven. Ten. Okay, stop it. Alright, just an outside ball. Ten seconds to go. Yes, ten seconds, seven seconds to go. We have a answer for the three, two, two, three.
Yo, get back to the court, get back to the court, and back court, and back court.
Ten, nine. Eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Five, four, three, two, one. Alright, basketball, basketball, basketball. Basketball. What do you have to do this? Basketball, basketball. Score is getting critical. We, we, we're going to the top point right now. We don't want to move, Charlie.
Let's bring it with the crowd, let's go, talk to the people in the crowd.
Alright. Charlie, you, you in the crowd. Ask the crowd, how, how it is, man? How you enjoying the game? Alright. Alright. Charlie, you're gonna stop on the dance. Charlie, you're gonna stop on the dance. Are you enjoying the game?
The local.
Everybody, great job, great job. So, who would you take away? Okay. You're on my side. Charlie, you're gonna do a form, you're gonna do a form. You go ahead or you go to the end. Let's go to Miss Paul.
Let's go to Miss Paul.
Charlie, let's go to Miss Paul. Let's go to Miss Paul. Miss Paul, tell us how you enjoy the game.
Are you the Dallas Spurs or the local?
Charlie, I believe in this. Charlie, I believe on this. Charlie, I believe on this side. Listen, do not ask them to stand.
No, no, it's okay.
Let's go to Kyra.
I think we have some fake locals.
Let's go to Kyra. What do you think about the game? Are you enjoying the game? Great, great. Is there anything different to take the Dallas Spurs or the local to do to make it to win? Do you think the locals doing a good job playing so far?
Very much. Every day, if you ask us, if you ask us, we're giving them a little bit of a run.
It's good, it's good. Nice having you, Kyra. Nice having you. One more, Charlie. We are pretty good. Let's go to the credit game. Charlie, Charlie, let's go to the credit game. You need to save your money in the credit game.
Yes.
If you're Dallas Spurs and you have a pretty morning, be coming to you. Check.
Surprise number one, ready to jump. Because he is happy and he is happy. I'm telling you. He's a boy that enjoy basketball game and like it real. He really, really enjoy this game.
Good to have him, good to have him. Thanks for your support. Yes, everyone, thanks for your support. Super, super. DJ, DJ.
We're in the first quarter. Uh, let me hear some of the.
Okay, let's go to you.
Somebody Dallas Spurs fan. What's it, what do you think about the game?
That's a funny, that's a funny. Great job.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Great job.
DJ. Give me something, give me something to the side. Give me something inside. Don't forget your live on AM news. Don't forget your. Stop on the bar. Stop on the bar, get your mom and your children. Get your drink. Super, super, we're gonna get a drink right now. DJ, hold on.
I hope you find someone else. To love you like I do. To love you like I do. I tell you all I like getting this way. We put it up as well. We put it up as well. I tell you all I like getting this way. We put it up as well. We put it up as well. I get stressed. I gotta take it anyway. Everyday stress. Hey, help us. Don't take it easy. Help us. Don't, don't take it easy. I hope you find someone else.
Could you tell me why no woman enjoy yourself? Could you put it, ah, by the dog, they throw something and come out with you? What they got to do?
I hope you find someone else. I hope you find someone else. I hope you like I do. I tell you all I like getting this way. We put it up as well. We put it up as well. I tell you all I like getting this way. We put it up as well. We put it up as well.
Let's go, let's go, let's go, let's go.
Alright, alright, alright. The red team has just scored again. Let's go, Dallas Spurs. We looking good. Yes. Yes, we have come and passed the ball to his next brother. Oh, what a bad pass, what a bad pass. Alright, Charlie, back on the game, back on the game. He shoot the ball, oh, my god, what a great shot.
We gotta defend the three-point area, we gotta defend the three-point area.
Blue has the ball. The blue looking again, going.
Yes.
This guy is in point. Big block by Hendrix.
Oh, my god.
Shama is back on the court. Shama is back on the court. Big block! What a block by Hendrix.
What a great block.
Highs pro.
The Hendrix.
Hendrix, highs pro.
Yes.
What a block by Hendrix.
Say hello to my viewers.
I think the coach made some adjustment. Remember, I was alive.
Say hello to my viewers.
Okay, hello to AMO viewers from all over the world. You're watching the biggest game.
Number one, number one, AMO.
Big up to AMO, AMO viewers. Sherry change. Oh, yeah, Sherry is in Bruno. Oh, Sherry, oh, that's Sherry, somebody in Bruno.
I think she was going to change.
Half and half.
I think we put some rum in that pot, that's what I mean.
What a shot. He look at the red missing a lot, Charlie. The red missing a lot.
Big, 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 big rim, big rim, big rim.
He come down with the ball. Watch it, he pass the ball for the main guy. This guy watch the ball, I want shot. Oh, he look like he missing. He look like he missing. Okay, red has the ball.
It's okay.
Red has the ball, go in, dribble the ball. He dribble the ball. Look for his, look for, look for red. Dribble the ball, he dribble it inside. And he shot a block. What a blocker. What a block he shot by Shama.
Ball in the ball.
Good shot by Shama.
We not rebounding the ball at all. We got a timeout, timeout by the blue, timeout by the blue.
Coach Iby called him out.
Yep.
Well done, Coach Iby.
He making noise, I don't know if he make, I don't know if he making noise because he don't have enough rum in his cup.
Well, well done, Iby, Coach Iby. Right, soon it's getting closer. Yeah. Message. Yes.
Tell this is a hello on Jeffrey. Oh, yes, we got, we got, we got messages from all, all, all Dallas Spurs, all over the world.
Say to that person a hello on Jeffrey.
That's right.
This is a big, big up to you.
Are you enjoying the game?
Jeffrey, big up to you from AMO.
Alright, I, I nearly stopped hitting that point. When, you only hit that part when the blue score. Sherry is half and high.
This is a. It's clear calling this is a.
That's it. They don't know where them shoot.
They say to tell this is a hello.
We got some message.
Friend of this year. Always from New York, asking the coach to look out now for a shoot. More. Iby. Iby. This is from AMO. Coach. Coach from all over the world. I'm the only fucking rookie. And we like all the fucking rookies. Asking our coach to let our players shoot the ball.
Oh, base online as well, all the diaspora, her bag. They saying they want them to win, they want the boys to win.
Yes, great message from her, great message.
Big up, big up to the V, big up to the V. Nobody didn't look up to, look up to. Nobody can see there.
This is, this is our last tour now here. And we really like it.
Yes, they will, they will be a part.
Yes, yes, they are coming.
Big up to their family. And Charlie, no, you know, big, 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 big up to AMO.
Big up to AMO, yes, I tell you. I just think big up to AMO.
Charlie.
Oh, we are injured, we is the.
Listen, listen to him, listen to him.
Is he injured, is he injured?
Listen to him.
They don't go to it, huh? Oh, that's what, that's what happened.
He tried to leave that room.
He tried to leave that room.
It's not true. Because I, it's not true, it's not true.
Because he didn't.
Just because I tell Lennon, he's making brother over call me.
He's giving the message that I.
Don't listen to them.
Don't listen to them.
We keep together.
Okay, 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 okay.
I was telling you, big, big up to AMO news, you know.
Yes.
Big up to AMO news.
I tell you, all over the world.
This guy watching every.
Are you saying hi to your wife overseas?
Of course. Big up to AMO news.
Yes, Brigady. I hope you have some great plans for tomorrow. You know, I tell, that's part of my, that's part of my deportation.
No, Charlie, I, 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 I.
You not doing anything for your wife.
I rent the jetty, I rent the jetty.
Okay, good, 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 good. Alright, Brigady.
A jet, a jet. Back to the game, back to the game. Back to the game, okay. Well done, boys, shoot the ball. And he. He shot, he shot us, great, Charlie.
He's kidding, he's kidding, he's doing.
Shot out a good shot.
That was a great shot.
Okay, I, I wanna see it again. I wanna see it again, Charlie. Blue has the ball. He pass the ball. He shoot a free. Oh, my, oh, oh, little, up. And he's inside.
Yes, yes, yes.
Good pass by Hendrix.
We just need to defend.
Good pass by Hendrix.
Hey, coach.
Don't forget. Pablo Coconut Water, get the coconut water.
Three-point line. Them guys shooting wide.
This guy feeling hot. Big up, pass the ball, pass the ball. And he's up.
Mr. Think, he need support. He need support. Mr. Think, he need support.
Looking at the blue. He looking at the blue. Look at the blue. Dribble the ball. He shoot the ball. Oh, my god.
Defense.
Defense. This was. Defense. 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 Oh.
Nobody disapp, nobody disapp.
Lata is on fire. The Lata is on fire, Charlie. First Lata is in basketball.
That's a Lata.
First Lata is in basketball.
Okay, okay, okay. He had some of the Lata beat.
Oh, Lata is in basketball. Okay, Kalonilu. Kalonilu. Oh, my god. This guy like Chona. Hendrix on the, Hendrix. He looking like you want. Oh, the try, Charlie, try something.
They got trouble, man.
Hey, they trying to.
Shama.
They got trouble, man.
Wow.
Yes, yes, yes. Coco. Coco, that's a hard one. Coco. I tell you. Hard one. We gonna, we fire, you know.
I bet.
That's a hard one, Coco. Coco, give it a drink, give it a drink, give it a drink.
Guys, we gotta defend the three-point line. And Charlie, I'll tell you, the Eagles, about the Eagles coaches right here. BK. He's the Eagles coach, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Pabush basketball coach.
Swa, Swa. Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, that's the coach for the Eagles.
And Charlie, don't forget, they won in a league, they won in a league on the, on the twenty-ninth of January.
Okay, go.
Pabush league.
That's good.
So, don't forget, people, Pabush is winning a league. On the twenty-ninth of January. So, come support.
Hendrix turn on fast lead, man. I can't believe my ball go from.
Get something, boy, we need a round.
Rebound, man.
Yes.
Yes, Hendrix still.
Take all the time. Take all the time.
Point.
Yes.
Hendrix on point.
Good job, good job. Move the ball around, move the ball around.
Hendrix has the ball.
Yes.
He watch him, he watch his partner. He turn. Good. Hendrix, he pass the ball. And he hear that he shoot the ball. Oh, what a poor shot. What a poor shot. Better rest up.
It's all about, blue ball, blue ball.
Tyra is getting pretty upset. Tyra, 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 the truth is the truth. Tyra is getting pretty upset, damn, I'm telling you. And Charlie, the Kyren Cowboy be next after the game of basketball.
Alright, so.
I guess he here, we know.
We gonna be here for a long time.
I tell you. Have a great time. Sponsored by AMO News and Village Cops, sir.
That's right.
Kyren Cowboy sponsored by AMO News and Village Cops, sir.
That's good.
Charlie, remember, we in vacation. Oh, my god. Charlie, remember, we in vacation.
We have more news, we have more news, yeah.
Let's get some guys. We in the blue on vacation. Oh, my god, look at the blue. Where is Iby, Iby?
Where is the coach?
Where is the coach? Where is the coach?
Where is the team?
Iby, he need to call a timeout. Iby need to call a timeout. Oh, this guy, the last guy. Right, what a referee, what a referee selling. What a referee selling.
He referee following us.
Whoa, he make, you making, you making Tyra get upset.
He referee following us.
Red have the ball, anybody move, move, move the ball. Oh, my god, and he shoot the ball. Pass the ball to Shama, and Shama shoot the ball. And he's inside. And he's inside, but fresh, he hang up. Blue has the ball. He watch him, he dribble the ball. He dribble the ball. He watch him, he pass the ball to Dion. Dion roll the ball. Dion watch his partner. Dribble the ball. Watch him dribble the ball. He dribble the ball, he watch him. He pass the ball. This guy, oh, Hendrix on the ball. Oh, the Hendrix. And he's goal. It's a goal.
What a good move by Hendrix.
Charlie, this game is getting tense.
It's getting real.
Charlie, this game is getting tense.
Yes, yes.
Charlie, this, come on there, come on there, mash. Charlie, this game is getting tense.
Yes.
Pretty close.
Yes.
Pretty close. Red has the ball. Lata, he shoot the ball. He touch nothing. And this coming on the ball. And he shoot the ball. And he's up.
Yes, Charlie.
Blue is on fire.
Yes.
Blue is on fire. Blue is on fire.
He can't run.
Red point down with the ball. Referee, Adel and Kobe is the referee for the game tonight.
He's fire.
You don't open his hand. You don't open his hand. Hey, outside.
Outside. Yes, yes. Yes, he did a good job.
He did a good job.
He did a good job.
He shot that, blue has the ball. Calm down. Calm down, look at Hendrix. Look at Hendrix. And he shoot the ball. Oh, Charlie. Charlie, I tell you. Charlie, I tell you. Charlie, remember, I tell you, blue is on fire. Defense. 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 Charlie, red, Charlie, this guy not on the court. This nigga won't talk on the court.
Yes, everybody, Hendrix.
Hendrix has the ball. Hendrix is looking like he in trouble. Hendrix looking like he in trouble. Pass the ball to Dion. Dion watch him.
Take your time, take your time. Take your time.
Dion has the ball, dribble the ball. Dion is on fire. Deion watch his partner, haul the ball, and shoot the ball. You want a shot, you want a shot. You want a shot, you want a shot. Hendrix, you want a shot. I'm telling you, Deion has the ball, dribble the ball. Hendrix, whoa, 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 Hendrix. Whoa, whoa, Hendrix. Whoa, whoa, Hendrix. Tyra, Tyra watch the ball. And he, and he, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, boys, boys.
Referee, this game is getting tense. This game, we gotta call the ambulance. Call the ambulance for Hendrix.
Hey, call the ambulance for Hendrix. The coach was asking for a timeout before that play.
Referees don't see that, Charlie.
Referees don't see that.
Referees, I need to call the ambulance for Hendrix.
Referees don't see nothing, no.
Charlie.
Now we see it.
Now we see it after, after the ball, we walk down, down, down.
Okay.
I'm very, very frustrated. So Charlie, who want to go?
Our coach was asking for a timeout before that.
Who are the other coaches?
Before that.
Who are the other coaches?
Who are me out? Who are me out? Who are me out?
Don't forget Cowboy, I still forget this.
Yes, yes, yes.
Caribbean Cowboy is sponsored by EMO News and Council is next. So we are going nowhere.
We here for a long time.
We are holidaying.
Yes.
We are getting ready. Caribbean Cowboy is sponsored by EMO News. We are holidaying, we need to go on holiday.
Yes.
We are on holiday, we are on holiday.
Yes, yes.
Remember, Caribbean Cowboy is next. Yes, you are on EMO News and Council. All you stand is only with all you. But I'm glad that. Yes, you are on EMO News and Council. All you stand is only with all you. Right, because Charlie, one more thing, if you have to ask, where EMO from? Why they gonna say Pebush?
She's from Dominica.
No, Pebush.
Like, she's from.
When you ask where EMO from, it's from Pebush.
Yes.
So Pebush knows.
I feel it in the entire Dominica.
You say now, we are together. After here, we support who we support, but we are together.
Pebush.
That's, that's the spirit of the Pebush people, I telling you.
Yes.
I big up to EMO News, again, I can't stop say that. Big, big up to EMO News. Go fuck and stop on the. This champion, EMO News. Who had the home seat, who had the home camera?
Take your time, little, take your time.
Who had the EMO News right? Who had the work?
This game is live.
Who is driving today, watching the basketball?
Yeah.
Big up to EMO News.
That's right, that's right.
Back to the basketball. Oh, he's inside.
We need to play this.
Come on, Blue, come on, Blue. Give your speaker there a sweet to watch.
Deion, get them, to this side along.
Coach Albi, Coach Albi, he looking like very.
Oh, God.
He says, gas empty.
I am so proud of that, of that fan.
Shama is here.
Hey, we need to block.
That's why he is 47, 63.
Which fan?
That, that, the red, the red fan.
Oh, my choice, man. My time, my image, my star is on fire. Yes, from China, I see that guy, he's on fire.
Three pointers.
A three pointer, ah, a three pointer.
We getting close, we getting close.
Fifty-nine, fifty-nine?
Fifteen.
Oh, he's calling him a man.
Oh, no, no, it is close.
Okay. Where is Hendrix? Hendrix. Hendrix.
I hope this is good, did I ask?
He pass the ball, he pass the ball, shoot Hendrix, oh, miss the ball, red has the ball, red has the ball. And he, and he's up on, oh my god. Shama is on fire.
I saw the call sound.
I saw the call sound. Referee here, I know. Look at the coach, he smiling, watch what she.
Yeah, she's smiling, wait.
What, what?
Why you ever see a coach, why you ever see a referee smiling?
She, 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 that, that she lie. Watch, watch Shama, he's lying. Why, why you ever see a referee smile for another game, Pebush? Oh, you got pass. Oh, you got pass. Who pass the ball, Lataheh, didn't I ask, didn't I ask the red coach team? Leave me sound of the game.
Bryce, he had his.
I listen, I listen. Bryce, you are listening. Bryce, oh lord, oh lord. Bryce, Bryce, you have to listen to us. It's we sponsoring the league. Listen to us, we tell you who to put in.
Yeah, Bryce, but we need to take Mr.
Charlie, big up to, big up to the Eagles coach.
Two small guys on the game.
Charlie, big up to the Eagles coach.
Hey, referee, can you just keep.
BK, 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 then I Swah.
Yeah, you got a ball, call defense, defense.
He's counting, BK.
Defense.
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 Oh, I think our Dallas probably time.
I telling you, I was just gonna say that.
Our Dallas probably the time, but.
Look it. Oh my god.
Ruff, I wasn't calling nothing for us, man.
I can understand that. And next, and next. And, oh, oh, yes. But who for that dog?
Ruff, I wasn't calling nothing for us, man.
You say that?
Ruff, 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 you ain't got nothing for us, man. Ruff, ruff.
Okay, sit down.
Ruff. You don't call nothing for us, man.
Coco, we, we hire you to coach. Coaching a good Coco.
Coco, Coco, Coco's a fool, he man's a fool, he man's a fool.
Alexis. You know Coco don't jump, he don't, he can't jump. Coco, we hire you to coaching game.
Coco, if he out, he hasn't called nothing for us, man.
Don't forget the bar, big up the bar, big up the bar.
Yo, we still.
We got two lovely, pretty girls in the bar. Don't forget, big up the bar, tell Bobby get chicken. Support the council, support the council.
Yes, blue.
Support the council, and don't forget your coconut water, Pablo's coconut water, that's right. And please don't forget after, we got the Cowboy, singing this sponsor by EMO News. EMO News and Council. Pebush is taking, Pebush is running, Pebush is on fire, Pebush all way.
You enjoying the game? That's, that's good.
You enjoying the game?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Good job, boy. Kylan, I think, I think our Dallas probably too much wrong over the weekend.
I wonder why?
But.
We are who, who check Kylan.
That's it right there, so Charles.
Coco, Coco, Coco?
Yeah.
Coco check Kylan. No, let, let him pass that Kylan. Four, oh, that's it, that, that, well done, well done referee. Well done referee.
He seem like.
Well done Coco. The brother of Jonathan. Well done Coco, the brother of Jonathan. Now, now you seem like.
That's fair all, that's fair all.
Hey, Ruff, how much time we have left?
No basket.
Adel, we, we are right.
No basket.
Inside. How much time we have left? Blue has the ball, and Blue has the ball. He bangs the ball, he bangs the ball, he bangs the ball, and the free throw line. He watch him, and he shoot the ball. And he inside, and he's in your face, as we say. As we say, he's in your face. On the free throw line, thank you, Jonathan.
I don't know how much time we have left.
Charlie, Charlie. Oh my. Latai, first, first Latai basketball. What, what's the time left?
Fantastic.
Oh, first Latai basketball.
Minute twenty-two. Minute twenty-two to go.
Big pass, Blue has the ball, he pass, oh, Hendrix miss the ball. Hendrix miss the ball. Outside, red ball. It's got red ball now.
You don't wrong. We are not doing anything wrong, we are winning.
Now, you, you hear the voice of the coach? Red ball now. Coach Bryce is walking up and down. Coach Bryce is walking up and down.
That's right, coach, that's right.
He's frustrated, he see his score getting close. IB is smiling. And he has the ball, he bangs the ball, dribble the ball, dribble the ball, and he on the block, man. My Hendrix.
Take a turn, take a turn.
Hendrix. Take the ball out.
Guys, defense.
Watch, pass the ball to Red. He shoot the ball. Blue is on fire, my Blue is on fire.
But Blue can't pass the ball, he let the last ball. But we take the last ball. Oh my god, Pebush. Fifty-one seconds to go, fifty-one seconds to go.
How much, how much?
Forty-five, forty-four, forty-five.
Make sure you make it through. He shoot the ball, it's free. It's a free. It's a free.
Yes.
And then he has the ball, and then he watch, and then he shoot the ball. I don't even go over inside. We drop by Lenny, drop by Hendrix, Hendrix is upset, point him down with the ball, pass the ball. Hendrix, Hendrix. Hendrix, five. Get him back the ball. Blue has the ball again. Nine, four, hit the ball.
Eighteen.
Charlie, you got a scoreline.
Ruff, he don't touch.
Shoot the ball, and he's inside, oh my god, red has the ball.
We don't have to take.
Dribble the ball, pass the ball for, oh, come on. Seven. Oh my god, five. This guy has the, this guy has the, he's on the cap, sir. He's on the hip. Let's take it to the side.
What a champion, what a, how do we win? So the red team has won.
Good job, guys, good job. Blue shall love the ball, yes. Yes, good job. Charlie, pass up, pass up. We drop too much wrong over the weekend. Charlie, Charlie, Charlie.
Bring it in.
Charlie.
Bring it in.
Charlie, we are so.
Play all the bars in Pebush.
The, 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 was too much wrong, all you know, we are not playing. Charlie, we are something to do.
My own players.
Charlie, we are on the competition, we are on the. Announce. Guys, we. Charlie, we are so.
Why, why, why we got?
We are on competition, I'm a cheerleader. A cheerleader. Pebush, more path, better than here, so the winner, the winner arms in tonight.
Okay.
So who you believe in the winner, Charlie? And he's the solo one, he's the solo one of the world. You believe in the, the, the. Oh, who's winning the game? They want to win the game. And Charlie, we have, we have more. We like more pack. We know. Deion. Charlie.
What you love is Pebush.
I love.
You got feeling, you have, you have a sense.
If you will be going back to.
I'm not saying I'm here yet.
So far, so good.
What you, what you, what you, what you sign? Come on, Chema, come on, come on, Chema. Let's get to the Chema, Chema, come here.
He has got a good job.
Yes, yes.
I'm a Chema. So. Everybody see you. Everybody, we go to, go to, go to Charlie.
We all need to know, we want to say something to the people who's coming in.
This is a good word, for all the support, for the cheerleaders, and everything that's been going on over the weekend.
Yeah, we must, for that, we need to make it for immigration again. And we say, I'm going just. And we are so proud of, of EMO. It's like, where are we going? In this game, and once we play, we are, it's the Christmas act of Dominica.
Oh, yes.
Good job, yeah, I do like that. He's so right. Charlie, you are doing amazing job for the people of Pebush. Only person I've seen most of Pebush.
No, it's not about me, it's about us. I think it's team, an amazing team.
So you believe you are a good team?
Oh, yes, I do.
Alright, that's good. Are your members of the team, right here? Are your member, your members of the team, are they all here?
Yeah, they are, they're working hard.
Bring the phone, bring the phone.
Yeah, they are.
Charlie, remember, I'm busy, I'm very busy. But Charlie, save it so far, so save it so far. Support the bar, guys, support the bar. We have Miss Paul, so don't forget, we have Alex, call her Miss Paul. We would, we're plus the best in everything, there, there. Audrey.
That's right.
They actually had to check, you wouldn't even know that. You are. They recommend. They actually had to check. But Charlie, we should. Dominica, because of Pebush, I don't know that. Show me a, show me a gun. But, but, that's, that's, that look like free, that look like.
Remember, I'm from Dubla.
But we from Dubla. We have the, the lady who took Pebush cultural group to distance in Dominica. Let's give it up to Miss Paul. Miss Paul, what, what do you have to say for the Pebush, the Pebush people?
Oh, this is a wonderful, Pebush is the cultural capital.
That's right, yes, plus, plus.
Well, anyway, Christmas, independence, laundry, ballet, anything. The food, the drink, the people.
We're married, baby.
That's right, that's right. My aunt, she was in Kalispina today, and I was getting a drink at the bar, and them guys were saying, boy, Pebush had action. I wish I was in Pebush.
I know.
And everybody want to be in Pebush, because that's who we are. We are one people, we love everyone, and keep that movement going. No matter where you go, where you travel, remember you from Pebush. And big up to EMO News, who are doing a big job, and everybody love EMO, and everybody knows EMO is from Pebush. Alright, I'm telling you, Charlie, yes. We have Pebush on the map.
Yes, yes.
Pebush on the map, the government, the government need to give an hour.
We should, we should actually name Pebush.
That's welcome Caribbean Cowboy, they are here.
Okay, guys, always here, Charlie.
Cowboy's here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, alright, he's a Pebush man, for sure.
Definitely.
Caribbean Cowboy is sponsored by EMO News and Council.
Of course, of course.
Every, everything EMO is. So we here for a long time, and a good time. So far, DJ, watch your signal, and then you give us something.
Yes, yes, yes.
So far, come down DJ, DJ Hana. Give us something in the time. DJ Hana.
So you still have some time to come down to Pebush tonight. We have the Caribbean Cowboy who will be playing later on. Come on, enjoy yourself, come on, enjoy part of Pebush. The Cowboys are here, and they are getting ready to start. Are you ready for some Caribbean Cowboy? Yes, we are ready. Um, the Cat Pool is in, for taller BVI, if you have a pool, you can contact Cat Pool. Even if it's Dominica, you can contact him for pool maintenance. Yes, and Caribbean Cowboy is coming up next, sponsored by the Village Council and the EMO News. So get ready for some nice country western and some Christmas songs by the Caribbean Cowboy, Julian Riffian and his team. So we are happy to bring you this coverage, please bear with us as we, we on standby to bring you this coverage. So big up to Pebush people. Big up to the community for this great game, this great evening, and you can see the shirts. Masne and Jolene, twenty-fifth. Twenty-fifth wedding anniversary, congratulations to them, yes. Thank you. So we are here on standby waiting on the Caribbean cowboy. They are actually setting up and they will be starting pretty soon. Free water for EMO News. So please bear with us. We are on standby waiting on the Caribbean cowboy.
Right, yeah, okay. Tell me, cowboy, how? How is Peibush doing? Alright. Oh, baby. Yeah. And I deserve, but I'm thankful. Love and thankful for a woman like you. Thank you very much. Did everybody have a wonderful Christmas? Alright, of course, if you live in Peibush, you should have a wonderful Christmas. You got the best Christmas of all. Every time I turn, I see something's happening in Peibush on Christmas time. Oh, yeah. Thank you very much. But let me tell you, let me tell you about what I had for Christmas. All I had for Christmas was some... I get a smile, I see a sign. Something hit my head. But I was fine, I was fine. Just one thing makes me forget. Red, red wine. Stay close to me. Down in my Feelings. Still make me cry. I lose my heart. I get a smile Then it's hard. Something's in my head. But I was fine. No I was fine. Just one thing makes me forget. Red, red wine. Stay close to me. Down in my Feelings. Still make me cry. I lose my heart. Red, red wine. Red, red wine. Red, red wine. Red, red wine. Red, red Red, red wine feels so fine. You get me rocking all up at night. Red, red wine feels so fine. You get me rocking all up at night. All I got for Christmas is some red, red wine. All I got for Christmas is some red, red wine. All I got for Christmas is some red, red wine. All I got for Christmas is some red, red wine. Hey, all I got for Christmas is some red, red wine. All I got for Christmas is Red, red wine. 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 I'm sorry I'm not used to both. This my darling. I think so. I don't care just one to say. But forever I will pray. You and I will Be as true As the birds of In the trees. Oh, please Stay by me. Diana. When you hold me close. Oh darling. Yeah, I know. I love you, but you lost me. Oh darling. Can't you see? I love you and all my heart. And I hope Never fall. Oh, please Stay by me. Diana. Oh my darling. Oh my lover. Tell me that there is no other. I love you, but do you love me? Only you can break my heart. Only you can tear it apart. When you hold me in your loving arms. I can feel you giving me joy. Oh baby, darling. Fall inside. Yes, baby, darling. Come in my Oh, please Stay by me. Diana. Oh my darling. Oh my lover. Tell me that there is no other. I love you, but do you love me? Only you can break my heart. Only you can tear it apart. When you hold me in your loving arms. I can feel you giving me joy. Oh baby, darling. Fall inside. Yes, baby, darling. All your might. Oh, please Stay by me. Diana. Oh, please. Diana. Oh, please. Diana. Oh, please. Diana. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. See from here this one, this is an old one that You don't admit it new, so we're gonna throw it at you too. I get a smile the sun shines most of the times. And the feeling's laid back. Palm trees grow and slow, but don't you know keep talking about Making my way back. Well, I'm Dominica Bunny race, but nowadays I must explain you show. I get a smile, but it ain't how. The air is strong, but it ain't mine no more. I am myself. To no one left. Ain't no one heard that I'll Give them a chance. I am a cry. I am sad eyes. And I am lost and I can't Even see why. Leaving me lonely still. Did you ever read about a frog? Dreamed about being a king? That became wrong. But except for the names and the fear that changes If it doesn't bother me. Oh, the story's the same one. But I got an empty nest to bed inside and I've tried. But he won't let me go. And I'm not a man who will swear. But I never cared for the sound of being alone. I am myself. To no one left. Ain't no one heard that I'll Give them a chance. I am a cry. I am sad eyes. And I am lost and I can't Even see why. Leaving me lonely still. Oh, did you ever read about a frog? A dream of becoming a king? Yeah, he became wrong. But except for the names and the fear that changes If it doesn't bother me. Oh, the story's the same one. But I got an empty nest to bed inside and I've tried. But he won't let me go. And I'm not a man who will swear. But I never cared for the sound of being alone. I am myself. To no one left. Ain't no one heard that I'll Give them a chance. I am a cry. I am sad eyes. And I am lost and I can't Even see why. Leaving me lonely still. Leaving me lonely still. Leaving me lonely still. Leaving me lonely still. Alright, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. How about some country music? We love reggae, but how about some country music, right? Alright. That's what Caribbean Cowboy's about. Little island stuff, little country. We're gonna play some soca as well. That's what it's all about. A few songs of our own. Thank you so much for having us. Always a pleasure playing here in Peppleshore. Thank you so much. Always come on and line numbers. Almost heaven. Dominica. Beautiful mountains, three hundred sixty five rivers. Life is younger. Younger than the trees. Younger than the mountains. Growing like a breeze, country road. Take me home To the place I belong. Where Dominica. Mama, mama. Take me home Country road. All my memories Gathered round her. Mama's lady Saved it to see what. Dark and dusty Baited on the sky. Is the test of motion Till the sunrise, country road. Take me home To the place I belong. Dominica. Mama, mama. Take me home Country road. I hear a voice in the morning house, she calls me. The radio reminds me of a long, long way. Driving down the road again this time. Should've been home yesterday. Yesterday. Country road. Take me home To the place I belong. Dominica. Mama, mama. Take me home Country road. Alright, I know we have a lot of nice friends here. Please sit down. This one especially for you, it's the one here singing loud and clear. Come on now. Country road. Take me home To the place I belong. Dominica. Mama, mama. Yeah. Take me home Country road. Yeah. Country road. Take me home To the place I belong. Dominica. Mama, mama. Take me home Country road. One more time now. I hear a voice in the morning house, she calls me. The radio reminds me of a long, long way. Driving down the road again this time. Should've been home yesterday. Yesterday. Country road. Take me home To the place I belong. Dominica. Mama, mama. Take me home Country road. Gotta go. Country road. Hey. Take me home To the place I belong. Well. Dominica. Mama, mama. Take me home Country road. Country road. Take me home To the place I belong. Dominica. Mama, mama. Take me home Country road. Take me home Country road. Take me home Country road. Thank you very much. Alright, we're gonna play one of our songs, a couple of our songs now. Thank you so much.
Caribbean Cowboy live in Peppleshore.
Alright, the first time we played a song in Peb bush, we had to play it four times. I hope we don't play it four times tonight. Now that you know it already. It's coming up. One of our songs is called "Boo-ay face", Fix Your Boo-ay Face. You're walking down the street like you got no food to eat. I smile and say hello, but you looked at me like you wanna blow. Someone paid your bets. I don't know why you look so stressed. I know that we're strangers, but I swear one smile because you done that good. Fix your boo-ay face. You look so out of place. Why the boo-ay face? You're breaking down a whole wide race. Oh, can't even take yourself when you have a face like this. You make the whole world a much better place with a smile. Smile and fix your boo-ay face. And daddy used to tell me, boy, if you wanna find a lady, you got to smile a little bit more every time you walk on that road. Approaching this pretty girl, I smiled at her and I went away. She gave me one cup of easy, I said, "Hey", and walked away. Fix your boo-ay face. You look so out of place. Why the boo-ay face? You're breaking down a whole wide race. Oh, can't even take yourself when you have a face like this. You make the whole world a much better place with a smile. Smile and fix your boo-ay face. But if the face it could care, I'd be six feet down and still. Everyone knows you are pretty, but your boo-ay face make it ugly. If you are my lady, it's okay to look all the way. Cause some of them are hustlers and gobblers, and they made you this way, but not me. So fix your boo-ay face. You look so out of place. Why the boo-ay face? You're breaking down a whole wide race. Oh, can't even take yourself when you have a face like this. You make the whole world a much better place with a smile. Smile and fix your boo-ay face. So don't look like you just lost your weaves in a fight. Or don't make just cut your life. No matter what your problem, a hot twist wants something. Smile, smile, just smile. Yeah, smile, yeah, smile. Let me see them smile, smile, smile. Yeah, smile, smile, yeah, smile. We gotta sing this until everybody's smiling. Smile, smile, smile. Just smile, just smile. Smile and fix your boo-ay face. Alright. Thank you very much. Even the lizards rolling around somewhere were smiling too. On a warm summer day, a train bound to nowhere. A man I played a gambling, worked up too tight sleep. So we took turn to stare on the window while the darkness. But I moved to her and it began to speak. He said, "Son, I made my mind, I'm a ring people's place at." Knowing what the cards were, by the way they held it right. If you don't mind my saying, you see your out of essence for a taste of your whiskey. I'll give you some advice. So I handed him my bottle, drunk and then a smarter. Then he brought me cigarettes and I spit for a laugh. Then the night looked definitely quiet, and his face was still expression. Said, "If you gotta play it again, my heart, you gotta learn to play it right. You got to know where to hold." Nowhere to fall, nowhere to walk away, nowhere to run. You never count your money. When I sing at the table, there'll be time enough for counting. When the deal is done. Every gambler knows the secret to survival is knowing what to throw away. Knowing what to give, cause every hand's a winner. And every hand's a loser, and a person you can hope for is to die in your slip. So when you finish looking, turn back from the window. Crushed down a cigarette, fitted it up to slip. And somewhere in the darkness, the gambler he broke even. And it is found, words I found, and it is that I could keep. You got to know where to hold. Nowhere to fall, nowhere to walk away, nowhere to run. You never count your money. When I sing at the table, there'll be time enough for counting. When the deal is done, you got to know where to hold. Come on. Nowhere to fall, nowhere to walk away. Hey. Nowhere to run. You never count your money. When I sing at the table, there'll be time enough for counting. When the deal is done, you got to know where to hold. Nowhere to fall, nowhere to walk away, nowhere to run. You never count your money. When I sing at the table, there'll be time enough for counting. When the deal is done. One more time. Every gambler knows the secret to survival is knowing what to throw away. Knowing what to give, cause every hand's a winner. And every hand's a loser, and a person you can hope for is to die in your slip. So when you finish looking, turn back from the window. Crushed down a cigarette, fitted it up to slip. And somewhere in the darkness, the gambler he broke even. And it is found, words I found, and it is that I could keep. You got to know where to hold. Nowhere to fall, nowhere to walk away, nowhere to run. You never count your money. When I sing at the table, there'll be time enough for counting. When the deal is done, you got to know where to hold. Nowhere to fall, nowhere to walk away, nowhere to run. You never count your money. When I sing at the table, there'll be time enough for counting. When the deal is done, you got to know where to hold. Nowhere to fall, nowhere to walk away, nowhere to run. You never count your money. When I sing at the table, there'll be time enough for counting. When the deal is done. Thank you. I wanna be where I wanna be. I'd rather be where I'd rather be. Right here in Peb bush. Alright. If you love Peb bush, say yeah. If you love Dominica, say yeah. Alright, well, this is a song about Dominica, and I love Dominica. Ain't no place like home, baby. Not just for the holidays. So here's a song. One of my songs called "I Wanna Be Where I Wanna Be." Okay, you're riding up the canyon all around, when I last smiled. Okay, you're leaving the best of the journey, and I feel alive. I'm tumbling with my feet, and I'm a little bit. Feel the better of the earth, and I'm sitting watching the sea. I wanna be where I wanna be. Know what a place where I feel so free. I'd rather be where I'd rather be. All the place where I can be me. Up in the mountains, I'm from the sea. I'll trip my life on my island, I love the city. Roll up New York City, hey. I better start doing the thing of a river and get it straight. I'll take a hike up to the waterfall, swim till you're tired. Catch a fish from the water, don't see, cook it up yourself. But there's nothing that I can do, not somebody else. I wanna be where I wanna be. Know what a place where I feel so free. I'd rather be where I'd rather be. All the place where I can be me. Up in the mountains, I'm from the sea. I'll trip my life on my island, I love the city. Roll up New York City. If you love God, you love everyone. Beyond politics or religion. For the best we need to get a mess upon this smaller. I'm pissed you're picking mangoes, I'm breaking them up. Well, maybe rivers never get too cold, long as we have the sun. I wanna be where I wanna be. Know what a place where I feel so free. I'd rather be where I'd rather be. All the place where I can be me. Up in the mountains, I'm from the sea. I'll trip my life on my island, I love the city. Roll up New York City. I wanna be where I wanna be. Know what a place where I feel so free. I'd rather be where I'd rather be. All the place where I can be me. Up in the mountains, I'm from the sea. I'll trip my life on my island, I love the city. Roll up New York City, hey. I love my island, I love the city. I love my island, I love the city. If you love me, say "Yeah". I love my island, I love the city. 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 Yeah. I'm an island boy. Yeah, I'm an island boy. I'm an island boy. Yeah, I'm a Peb bush boy. And a Peb bush girl. Yeah, I'm an island boy. Yeah. Alright, thank you very much. This will be a feeling romantic is one for you. Baby, lock the dawn to the night's alone. But some music on itself is slow. Baby, we ain't got no place to go. I hope you understand. I've been thinking about it so long. Never felt it very quite this strong. I can't believe how much it turns me on. There's no hurry, don't you worry. We can take our turn. We're moving closer, let's go on, let's work. Baby, lock the dawn to the night's alone. But some music on itself is slow. Baby, we ain't got no place to go. I hope you understand. I've been thinking about it so long. Never felt it very quite this strong. I can't believe how much it turns me on. Just to be a man. Ain't nobody, I love the party. The way that I love you. When you're mine. Yes, I know how it is, love is one too. Lock the dawn to the night's alone. But some music on itself is slow. Baby, we ain't got no place to go. I hope you understand. I've been thinking about it so long. Never felt it very quite this strong. I can't believe how much it turns me on. Just to be a man. It's wild. Ain't nobody, I love the party. The way that I love you. When you're mine. Yes, I know how it is, love is one too. Lock the dawn to the night's alone. But some music on itself is slow. Baby, we ain't got no place to go. I hope you understand. I've been breaking down a sound in love. Never felt a feeling that was quite this strong. I can't believe how much it turns me on. Just to be your man. I can't believe how much it turns me on. Just to be your man. Yeah, wow! Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. You were so awesome, and you were so kind. We appreciate it. We wouldn't be here without you. So thank you so much for coming out. So this is... This one's for all the Dominican girls. Alright. We love our Dominican ladies. My, my, she's a natural beauty. And to tell her so was my everyday beauty. She love no ass singing, and she smiles. So I sang, and the smiles were near night. When there's queen in my life, I'm a king in paradise. Yeah. Every man wants to marry, ain't no American girl. She makes a man so happy, she makes his toes curl. She's a natural treasure like a pirate's lost pearl. I could travel around the world, but must come back to my nature and girl. At sunset, I swear I was a golden hair. We lay on the beach till the stars appear. In sunshine, we were fishing, we were walking. When it rains, we have been doing nothing. My ears never get wet of listening to her stories. Every man wants to marry, ain't no American girl. She makes a man so happy, she makes his toes curl. She's a natural treasure like a pirate's lost pearl. I could travel around the world, but must come back to my nature and girl. Alright, listen now. Well, I've found the most wonderful girls in all of the world, and a sweet, beautiful nature island girl. Yeah, I ain't gonna lie, but I won't boast. But I've come to find, yeah, I have learned. There the number one fault for raising on the road. Every man wants to marry, ain't no American girl. She makes a man so happy, she makes his toes curl. She's a natural treasure like a pirate's lost pearl. I could travel around the world, but must come back to my nature and girl. Alright. I'm gonna take that verse one more time. I think I messed it up a little bit. Yeah. I think I messed it up a little bit. I messed it up. Well, folks. I picked the most beautiful girls in all of the world, and a sweet, beautiful Peabody's girl! I ain't gonna lie, but I won't boast. But I've come to find, yeah, I have learned. There the number one fault for raising on the road. Every man wants to marry, ain't no American girl. She makes a man so happy, she makes his toes curl. She's a natural treasure like a pirate's lost pearl. I could travel around the world, but must come back to my nature and girl. Every man wants to marry, ain't no American girl. She makes a man so happy, she makes his toes curl. She's a natural treasure like a pirate's lost pearl. I could travel around the world, but must come back to my nature and girl. One more time! Every man wants to marry, ain't no American girl. She makes a man so happy, she makes his toes curl. She's a natural treasure like a pirate's lost pearl. I could travel around the world, but must come back to my nature and girl. Every man wants to marry, ain't no American girl. She makes a man so happy, she makes his toes curl. She's a natural treasure like a pirate's lost pearl. I could travel around the world, but must come back to my nature and girl. I could travel around the world, but must come back to my nature and girl. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, that's fun, that's fun. Alright, here's this one for you. There's great meaning to that song, and we love it. Came back... That song is probably a little older than I am. But close. Come on, sing that with us. There we go. Come on! And love the words of our life. Take care of your heart. Be excellent, but live nice time. Live a life. By the rivers of family love. Where we sat down. And where we went. When we remember Zion. By the rivers of family love. Where we sat down. And where we went. When we remember Zion. I'm telling you. Where we went. I used to wake up to the beat. With my head in the sand. Perhaps then we'll sing the last song in a strange land. By the rivers of family love. Where we sat down. And where we went. When we remember Zion. By the rivers of family love. Where we sat down. Where we sat down. And where we went. And where we went. When we remember Zion. Come on, come on! By the rivers of family love. Where we sat down. Where we sat down. And where we went. And where we went. When we remember Zion. By the rivers of family love. Where we sat down. And where we went. When we remember Zion. One more time! By the rivers of family love. Where we sat down. And where we went. When we remember Zion. By the rivers of family love. Alright. That was fun. You gotta wet them off. Dry them off, don't sing wet, alright? Still again. Through the light, through the darkness. Guided by a beating heart. I can't tell when this journey will end. But I know where to start. They tell me I'm young, you understand. Settle between. The sun will bless me, but I open up my eyes. That's alright, darling. So wake me up when it's summer. When I'm wiser and older. All this time I was finding myself. Didn't know I was love. So wake me up when it's summer. When I'm wiser and older. All this time I was finding myself. Didn't know I was love. A child can't read a way out of a world. I don't know where to head. But I get the chance to turn the world. But I'm having a hard time. Wish that this day could have been later. And I'd pray to lose my eye. Life is a game that's cruel and brave war. And love is a fire. So wake me up when it's summer. When I'm wiser and older. All this time I was finding myself. Didn't know I was love. So wake me up when it's summer. When I'm wiser and older. All this time I was finding myself. Didn't know I was love. Wake me up when it's summer. When I'm wiser and older. All this time I was finding myself. Didn't know I was love. So wake me up when it's summer. When I'm wiser and older. All this time I was finding myself. Didn't know I was love. So wake me up when it's summer. When I'm wiser and older. All this time I was finding myself. Didn't know I was love. I didn't know I was love. I didn't know I was love. I didn't know I was love. Alright, thank you very much. We're gonna take you back to some- We're gonna take you back to some roots, to the King of Calypso. See if you remember this couple songs, a little medley, from the King of Calypso. He was born in New York but raised from Jamaican parents. And when he was a child, he went back to Jamaica and learned some Calypso. And I love his music. Definitely a real man of... A real man of history, yeah. Harry Belafonte? Alright. See if you remember this one.
This song...
Sing along if you know it.
(singing)
Well, the money was tucked up behind my bed, wrapped up in a pillow behind my head. But Martina, she take me morning on Venezuelan Martina Martina Martina, she take me morning on Venezuelan Martina Martina Martina, she take me morning on Venezuelan Hey! Let's go! Martina Martina Martina, she take me morning on Venezuelan Martina Martina Martina, she take me morning on Venezuelan Quiet now! Martina Martina Martina, she take me morning on Venezuelan Hit me hard now! Martina Martina Martina, she take me morning on... Nice try! Martina Martina Martina, she take me morning on Venezuelan Coconut 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 woman is calling out And every day you hear her shout Every day you hear her shout (mumbling) Coconut 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 Hey, hey, yeah! Get your coconut water It's good for your daughter It's got like an iron Makes you feel like a lion Coconut 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 woman is calling out And every day you hear her shout Coconut woman is calling out And every day you hear her shout Get your coconut water It's good for your daughter It's got like an iron Makes you feel like a lion Coconut 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 A lady tell me the other day No one can take this sweet manner away I told her what was the mystery She said coconut coffee and ice curry Coconut water It's good for your daughter It's got like an iron Makes you feel like a lion Coconut 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 You can cook it in a pot It's a bit very hot Coconut or lime iron Makes you feel like a lion Coconut 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 woman say you look great Coconut mix with ice curry Thing that makes you think Coconut makes you feel a little wrong Get your coconut water It's good for your daughter It's got like an iron Makes you feel like a lion Coconut 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 Make you feel a little tipsy Make you feel like a chipsy It's got like an iron Makes you feel like a lion Coconut 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 Coconut, hey! Yeah, they say that coconut oil is not good, right? But Harry Belafonte knew all along it was good. Yeah. It's good for you. Coconut 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 Coconut, whoop-a coconut! Coconut 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 Two, three, four. Even bring you happiness Then I wish you all the best It's your happiness Not matter most of mine But if you ever make you blue Just remember, I love you I'll be there Before I have to drop by Such a courage I never ever have ever Did it just feel Blue as color For us two But if she rest you I never ever have ever Es que le Conchigo cuando Just to start I'll be there In time With me By your side To drive Away Every time That you cry But if you ever make you blue Just remember, I love you I'll be there Before I have to drop by I'll be there In time You can be By your side To drive Away Every time That you cry But if you ever make you blue Just remember, I love you I'll be there Before I have to drop by I'll be there Before I have to drop by I'll be there Before I have to drop by I'll be there Before I have to drop by Alright. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Happiness, boy! All the time is happiness Until I die, oh, happiness! Happiness! Happiness!
It's all happiness here. No sadness. You're right.
Happiness! Until I die! Happiness!
Are you enjoying the Caribbean cowboy with us here in Peabody? I hope you are. If you are enjoying, just show them some love Or send some love hearts in the comment section. What song would you like to hear from the Caribbean cowboy?
Sometimes late at night I lay awake and watch a slay day She's lost in peaceful dreams Watching over lies Lady in the dark And a thought crosses my mind If I never wake up in the morning Would she ever know The way I feel about her in my heart? If tomorrow never comes Will she know how much I love her? Did I try every way To show her every day? She's my only one If my time on earth were through And she must face this world without me This love I gave her in the past Gonna be enough to last If tomorrow never comes Cause I've lost love once in my life Never knew how much I love her Though I leave the regrets About true feelings for them Never would reveal So I made a promise to myself To say she ain't help but she means to me In a war that circumstance But there's no second chance To tell how I feel Cause if tomorrow never comes Will she know how much I love her? Did I try every way To show her every day? She's my only one If my time on earth were through And she must face this life without me This love I gave her in the past Gonna be enough to last If tomorrow never comes I've lost love once in my life Never knew how much I love her Though I leave the regrets About true feelings for them Never would reveal So I made a promise to myself To say she ain't help but she means to me In a war that circumstance But there's no second chance To tell how I feel Cause if tomorrow never comes Will she know how much I love her? Did I try every way To show her every day? She's my only one If my time on earth were through And she must face this life without me This love I gave her in the past Gonna be enough to last If tomorrow never comes So tell us someone that you love Just what you thinking of? If tomorrow Never comes
This is my last night.
You know this one? Everyone consider him Cowed up, county He understood what's said with him Proved on the wrong His mama named him Tommy Folks just calling me alone Something always told me You were really telling me wrong He was only ten years old When daddy died in prison So I looked at him, Tommy Cause he was my brother's son I still recall the final words My brother said to Tommy Sometime life is over But yours just begun I promised my son Not to do the things I've done Walk away from trouble if we can And one day you win If you turn out a chip I hope you're old enough to understand So you don't have to fight to be a man There's someone for everyone Tell this lover's Becky In a round, she didn't have To prove he was a man One day while he was working Godly boys came calling They took care of his Becky They took care of Becky, and they went through with that. Tommy opened up the door, saw his Becky crying. The torn red and shattered look, was more than he could stand. When it reached above the fireplace, threw down his daddy's picture. As the tears fell on his daddy's face, he heard these words again. I promised my son not to do the things I've done. Walk away from trouble if you can. And it won't be new week, if you turn your cheek. I hope you're old enough to understand. Son, you don't have to fight to be a man. The goblin boy just laughed there, as he walked into the barroom. What all that got up, let him halfway across the floor. When Tommy turned around, he said, "Hey, look on your loves living." Then he could have heard a beat drop, and Tommy stopped and locked the door. Funny girl's soft cry, was bottled up inside her. He wouldn't hold it, nothing back, he really had it all. When Tommy left the barroom, another goblin boy was standing. He said, "This was for Becky," as he watched the last one fall, and I heard him say, "I promise you dad, not to do the things you have done." And I walked away from trouble when I can. Oh, cause only I'm with her, didn't turn your other cheek. And my father, I said, "Hope you understand." Sometimes you gotta fight when you're a man. Everyone considered him the coward of the county. Alright, thank you very much. I don't know how you're gonna take this song, but it's a carnival. It's not, it's not all carnival on the road, but it's a carnival when you go to a circus, and they got monkeys, and they got elephants, and doing all kind of tricks with a clown. Yes, you're hip, you say you're hip. Well, for now, just for the carnival, okay? Cause when carnival, you can dress as anything you want to be. But anyway, here it is, hope you like it. Let's just dance the night away, that's what we're here for, to have some fun. One, two, three, four. There goes my happiness again. Just like the way she had been. She's gone away and I am free. Now she can't do a thing to me. Just wanna dance the night away. With senior years looking swag. Right now tomorrow is looking bright. Just like the sun in morning light. If you should see her, please let her know I'm well. As you can tell. And if she should tell you, she wants me back, tell her no. I gotta go. Just wanna dance the night away. With senior years looking swag. Right now tomorrow is looking bright. Just like the sun in morning light. Hey! Oh, if you should see her, please let her know I'm well. As you can tell. And if she should tell you, she wants me back, tell her no. I gotta go. Just wanna dance the night away. With senior years looking swag. Right now tomorrow is looking bright. Just like the sun in morning light. Hey! You look so nice! Oh, if you should see her, please let her know I'm well. As you can tell. And if she should tell you, she wants me back, tell her no. I gotta go. Just wanna dance the night away. With senior years looking swag. Right now tomorrow is looking bright. Just like the sun in morning light. Just wanna dance the night away. With senior years looking swag. Right now tomorrow is looking bright. Just like the sun in morning light. Awesome, thank you very much, appreciate it. A hundred? We'll take anything. Like my mom used to say, when I did something for her, wasn't that great? She'd just say, "It's better than nothing." I never took that as a compliment, "It's better than nothing." Deo, me said deo. They like come and me wanna go home. De, me said de, me said de, me said de, me said de. They like come and me wanna go home. Come on Mister Tallyman, tally the banana. They like come and they wanna go home. Come on Mister Tallyman, tally the banana. They like come and they wanna go home. De, me said de, me said de, me said de. They like come and they wanna go home. De, me said de, me said de. They like come and they wanna go home. Six foot, seven foot, eight foot, punch. They like come and they wanna go home. Six foot, seven foot, eight foot, punch. They like come and they wanna go home. De, me said de, me said de. They like come and they wanna go home. Come on Mister Tallyman, tally the banana. They like come and they wanna go home. Come on Mister Tallyman, tally the banana. They like come and they wanna go home. Six foot, seven foot, eight foot, punch. They like come and they wanna go home. Six foot, seven foot, eight foot, punch. They like come and they wanna go home. De, me said de, me said de. They like come and they wanna go home. De, me said de, me said de. They like come and they wanna go home. I wish my daddy lies with better writers sleep tonight. Every night lies with better writers sleep tonight. I wish my daddy lies with better writers sleep tonight. De, me said de, me said de. They like come and they wanna go home. De, me said de, me said de. They like come and they wanna go home. De, me said de, me said de. They like come and they wanna go home. Shake, shake, shake the ballin' line. Shake, shake, shake the ballin' line. Work, work, work the ballin' line. Work, work, work the ballin' line. I believe Mister Nona, I tell this place I know her. When she dances a ballin', she's a hurricane in the night. Well, I'm in the line, rock the ballin' time. I believe it. Jump in the line, rock the ballin' time. I believe it. I say jump in the line, rock the ballin' time. I believe it. Shake, shake, shake the ballin' line. Shake, shake, shake the ballin' line. Work, work, work the ballin' line. Work, work, work the ballin' line. Yeah! She's all right, that's a good show. Let's do it like this in tempo. When she got the sense to dance, she go, "Oh, baby, you're a good woman." I say jump in the line, rock the ballin' time. I believe it. Jump in the line, rock the ballin' time. I believe it. Jump in the line, rock the ballin' time. I believe it. Shake, shake, shake the ballin' line. Shake, shake, shake the ballin' line. Work, work, work the ballin' line. Work, work, work the ballin' line. Yeah! She's all right, that's a good show. And reasonable to be a star. As you get the work, when she walks, she bump up, she goes, "Oh." Jump in the line, rock the ballin' time. I say jump in the line, rock the ballin' time. I believe it. Jump in the line, rock the ballin' time. I believe it. Jump in the line, rock the ballin' time. Shake, shake, shake the ballin' line. Shake, shake, shake the ballin' line. Work, work, work the ballin' line. Work, work, work the ballin' line. She's all right, that's a good show. Let's do it like this in tempo. When she got the sense to dance, she go, "Oh, baby, you're a good woman." I say jump in the line, rock the ballin' time. I believe it. Jump in the line, rock the ballin' time. I believe it. Jump in the line, rock the ballin' time. I believe it. Shake, shake, shake the ballin' line. Shake, shake, shake the ballin' line. Work, work, work the ballin' line. Work, work, work the ballin' line.
We hope that you enjoy the session with us.
It's alright. I've been too much fun? Two. One more time! Yeah! I liked the way you moved into that. You did well! My, 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 that was nice! I like it. Alright, now, we know it's not only the tourists, we play for the tourists a lot. As we have the cruise ships coming in, but we know it's not a tourist alone that appreciate this next song. You like it too, right? It's coming out. And here's my buddy here, he's gonna take us into this song. His name is Will, say hi to Will! Alright, keep us. We'll keep things together for us here, he's a security guy. Yeah, you know who he is. And Jerry on guitar. Everybody know Jerry? They call him Nuts, because he's playing all them notes. Alright? So here we go. Here we go. Two, three, four. Where it began, I began to know it, but then I knew it's growing strong. Well, the spring, then spring began summer, but believe you come along. Yeah... Touching hell, reaching out, touching me, touching you. Sweet Caroline, good times seem so good. So good, so good, so good! But I had a little cry, to believe in the home. Look at the night, oh, it don't seem so lonely, if you laid up with all these children. And when I heard the drums of my shoulders hoping I heard them holding you. Whoa... Touching wall, reaching out, touching me, touching you. Sweet Caroline, good times seem so good. So good, so good, so good! But I had a little cry, to believe in the home. No, no. Come on, yeah! Sweet Caroline, good times seem so good. So good, so good, so good! But I had a little cry, to believe in the home. One more time, sweet Caroline, good times seem so good. Yeah! Yeah, I'm feeling fine, to believe in the home. Oh, sweet Caroline! Alright, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Happy trains to you, until we meet again. What happened?
Pick it up, pick it up.
Oh, he said pick it up. The last time we gotta pick it up, that's why I said, okay. He's a policeman, so he said to pick it up, we're gonna pick it up. Happy trains to you, until we meet again. Hey, guys, you guys are playing. What happened? Coconut? What happened to coconut? Rope the coconut! Alright, we're gonna rope it, okay? Happy trains to you, until we meet again. I know you were thirsty, so I looked quickly and ran. Fetch you that water, sweet water that never runs dry. If your heart's in the can, just say, "Tell me, is it hard or dry?" But I know a blood river, sweet water grows in the sky. You might try the rivers, but some rivers are rocky and wild. I'm a bad way to roll, and I might host them by. For you, I rope the coconut, rope the coconut. Don't care if the tree is tall as the sky, I rope the coconut, rope the coconut. I beg by a bowl, don't care what's the price, I rope the coconut, rope the coconut. I know you were thirsty, so I looked quickly and ran. Fetch you that water, sweet water that never runs dry. This Caribbean cowboy would love to sing a holiday. But more than anything, he's destined to save the day. The tree is so tall, but I'll show you how, I'm like no other. I'll fetch you that water, and then ride in the sunset together. For you, I rope the coconut, rope the coconut. Don't care if the tree is tall as the sky, I rope the coconut, rope the coconut. I beg by a bowl, don't care what's the price, I rope the coconut, rope the coconut. I know you were thirsty, so I looked quickly and ran. I'll fetch you that water, sweet water that never runs dry. Oh, this Caribbean cowboy would love to sing a holiday. But more than anything, he's destined to save the day. The tree is so tall, but I'll show you how, I'm like no other. I'll fetch you that water, and then ride in the sunset together. And for you, I rope the coconut, rope the coconut. Don't care if the tree is tall as the sky, I rope the coconut, rope the coconut. I beg by a bowl, don't care what's the price, I rope the coconut, rope the coconut. I know you were thirsty, so I looked quickly and ran. I'll fetch you that water, that water that never runs dry. My love, I'll fetch you that water, sweet water that never runs dry. Rope the coconut, rope the coconut, rope the coconut. Rope the coconut, rope the coconut, rope the coconut. Rope the coconut, rope the rope. Say rope the rope. You rope the rope. You rope the rope. Say rope the rope. You rope the rope. Say rope the rope. You rope the rope. Say rope the rope. Say rope the rope. Hey! Thank you! Thank you very much! Yeah! Happy New Year! Happy New Year! Happy New Year! Happy New Year! Let me hear! Happy New Year! 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 A voice that first was new to all of you! Thank you, Robin, and thank you, Evo, for having us. Thank you! There'll be a caliber on. Thank you, Evo. Thank you! Thank you! Happy New Year! 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 Alright! Thank you! And very much! Thank you very much!
One more, one more, one more, one more! Country road! We want country road!
We want! We want!
We want more! 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 We want more!
Why you say more, Papa?
Fine time!
Fine time! Fine time, fine time! We need a fine time! Fine time!
Lucille then, Lucille.
Yes, yes!
You got it, you got it. Somebody have a group of ladies want Lucille? I see. You picked a fine time to leave me, huh? Okay, you going home? The last time I sing a song about going home, my father say he don't ready to go home yet. So we're gonna play this one. There you go. In a bar, I turned around, across from the different On a bar stool, she took over the rain Thought I'd get closer, so I walked on over Sat down and asked her her name When a drink finally hit her, she said I'm no quitter But I finally quit the game on drink I'm grateful I still live here every night And I still want to be with the other life brain In empty room, I saw her, and I looked in the water I thought I went out of place You came to with a woman, sat down beside me She had a strange look on his face Those pale hair colors, it looked like my A miracle I was made This time, I share your home, it's the heart of breaking As I come to the woman and said You picked a fine time to leave me, Lucille With four hundred children, and a crop in the field Well, I've had some bad times, lived through some sad times This time, you're hurting more here You picked a fine time to leave me, Lucille After he left us, I ordered him a whiskey I thought I wish he made him look small From the lights of a barber, to a hotel The walls that I would talk to her on She was beautiful when she came to me She must have thought I lost my mind But I couldn't hold her, couple words that I told her Kept coming back time after time You picked a fine time to leave me, Lucille With four hundred children, a crop in the field I've had some bad times, lived through some sad times This time, you're hurting more here You picked a fine time to leave me, Lucille You picked a fine time to...
To leave me, Lucille!
Yeah! Wait, 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 wait. Wait, I have somebody say with four hundred children. It's not four hundred children. That's a whole lot of zafan there. Four hundred children, only four, sir. You're not that good to give a four hundred, sir. Be happy with four. Okay, let's sing that again. You picked a fine time to leave me, Lucille With four hundred children, and a crop in the field Well, I've had some bad times, lived through some sad times This time, you're hurting more here You picked a fine time to leave me, Lucille. One more time! You picked a fine time to leave me, Lucille. Yeah!
Like that? Of course, definitely!
Hey!
I just want to stop him, I just want to...
You picked a fine time to leave me, Lucille. One more time! You picked a fine time to leave me, Lucille With four hundred children, and a crop in the field Well, I've had some bad times, lived through some sad times This time, you're hurting more here You picked a fine time to leave me, Lucille You picked a fine time to leave me, Lucille You picked a fine time to leave me, Lucille. Alright, thank you very much!
Country road! Country road! One more, country!
We'll be back.
Country road, one more.
Alright, she say country road. If Emma say country, whatever she say goes, right? Emma is queen, right? Queen of Peabush! Yeah! If she says so, it goes, okay, here we go, one more time, she say. She said one more. That's what she said, that's right. Okay, here we go. Almost heaven, Dominica Beautiful mountains, 365 rivers Life is younger, younger than the trees Younger than the mountains, growing like a breeze Country road, take me home to the place I belong, Dominica Mountain mama, take me home, country road All my memories, gather around her Father's way, stranger to see war Black dust, painted on the sky Mister Jason Muncher, till I don't sing that right Country road, take me home to the place I belong, Dominica Mountain mama, take me home, country road I hear a voice in the morning, now she calls me The radio reminds me of a runaway Driving down the road, I get this feeling I should have been home yesterday, yesterday Country road, take me home to the place I belong, Dominica Mountain mama, take me home, country road Country road! Yeah! Take me home to the place I belong Where? Dominica Mountain mama, take me home, country road. Again! Country road, take me home to the place I belong, Dominica Mountain mama, take me home, country road. Yee-hah! Country road, take me home to the place I belong, Dominica Mountain mama, take me home, country road Take me home, country road Almost heaven, Dominica Beautiful mountains, 365 rivers Life is younger, younger than the trees Younger than the mountains, growing like a breeze Country road, take me home to the place I belong, Dominica Mountain mama, take me home, country road Country road, take me home to the place I belong, Dominica Mountain mama, take me home, country road. Hey! Country road, take me home to the place I belong, Dominica Mountain mama, take me home, country road Take me home, country road Yeah, take me home, down country road. Yee-hah! Alright! Hey, I must say, I must, I have, I have a... I have to admit something. I was home and I saw, I saw, I saw Peabush on TV or on, uh, on the phone And I saw a lot of people singing country music, I say, wow, listening that day without me. I say, well, I, I say, my team will come, and that's tonight. So thank you very much. I'm not, I'm not jealous anymore. I will not jealous anymore. Alright, Will. By the way, his name is Will, I didn't say what my name was. He's Will, and I'm Will Not. And he's Maybe. Alright, thank you guys, we, we had fun. Hope everyone had fun, continue to have fun. Alright, Happy New Year to everyone. I hope to see you next year! Alright, God bless.
Yes, I hope you enjoyed the session with Children Revere right here in Peabush. It was indeed a beautiful night, clean phone, great music, great ambience, beautiful people. We are just waiting for one announcement before we end our broadcast, so just bear with me. We are just waiting for an announcement from the chairman of the Peabush Village Council.
Ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together for the Caribbean Cowboys! On the way down, they had a discussion. I happen to hear they said that Peabush is their favorite place. Is that true, bro? Is that true, bro? They said Peabush is their favorite place, and they've been all around Dominica Because Peabush is the Christmas capital of Dominica. Right? Also, thank you to Emma News! Thank you to the Peabush Town and Village Council! One thing, Emma has been involved in everything. Emma is truly a patriotic citizen. Put your hands together for Emma! Emma! I am sure next year people are gonna follow, but they will not lead, we are leading. Caribbean Cowboy, we are leading, others will follow. Right? We want to thank you so much for coming. Thank you so much. We have an important announcement to make. Call Adele, we are calling Adele Francis. Adele Francis, we have such an important announcement to make tonight. Imagine people that had never seen dancing, they dance tonight. Imagine Brigidi dance tonight. Imagine Brigidi dance tonight. At same time, I saw Scotten dancing, imagine that. Last time I saw Scotten dance, he fell. And he didn't fall tonight. Scotten, good, good job, Sky! They had a Pharaoh's competition dancing and nobody won. You know why? Because none of the Pharaohs can dance. Scotten, there was Scotten, Karim, Jonathan and Ilios. They tried, nobody won. When they were winner number four, five, six, seven, eight, they were not, no one, two, three, four. Adele calling Adele Francis. Uh, Thomas, sorry, Adele Thomas. Adele! You know, recently we had this, um, Tidy Village, Tidy Hamlet, um, competition. I must comment, Peabush, Bermane, Providence, Mo Park, Dodan, everywhere. You are excellent. And Teplak! Ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together for Teplak! Ladies and gentlemen, competition tight. Competition tight. Imagine, imagine people driving by, they were saying, "Teplak, win win." Some were saying, "Peabush." You know, so many things. But guess one? But we have winner number three in the Tidy, well, not Tidy. Lighting competition, winner number three, we have...
Mary Teres Pharaoh from Dodan.
Mary Teres Ph- Pharaoh from Dodan. They are good at lighting, but not good at dancing. Winner number two, all the way from...
Peabush, Gerard Honor.
Papa G! Papa, one night, it was about midnight, I saw Geraldine on a ladder. And winner number one, all the way from...
Mo Park, Shirley Bruni.
Shirley! Shirley, imagine... You know what Shirley did? She collected all the men from Mokka and they did, they, um, thing her house, designed her house, decorated her house, and they said, when they win, they will have a party at her house. So put your hands together for Shirley! Shirley, next stage is gonna be much greater, ladies and gentlemen. Next stage is gonna be much greater. We, you know why I want it to be greater? Because Potmouth, Roseau, everyone want to follow. But we want to be a step ahead.
Tell them to start ordering their lights now.
So ladies and gentlemen, home people have lights...
On sale!
On this phone, now! So best thing to start ordering lights for next stage is now! Right? So start ordering your barrels of light. But before we go to the Hamlet, you know, we have, Adele, we cannot leave here without thanking the diasporans for being here. You know, you know they were the, the main contributors to Peabush being the Christmas capital of Dominica. You know, so, Massin, Massin, and Jero. Wow! Congratulations from the community of Peabush! Congratulations, you are living really well. Wow! Everybody, and you know what? You know who was the cheerleaders? Allison, Charlie, where's Charlie? Charlie!
They were not part of the committee, you know?
Huh?
They were not part of the committee.
Oh my God, come, come, come. Tell us a little more about it, yes.
Charlie and Allison, Ivy, even if they were cheerleaders, they were not part of the committee. Even if they were cheerleaders, they were not part of the committee.
So tell us who were the cheerleaders.
At the end of the day, my sister Momo here, her daughter Leira. Her baby has gone, Shiva has gone. But we made it and we have been good. But we had Locas, Dianas part of the committee. Emma was a major sponsor. And as you know, as I said, Tara, we had Theo. These were the persons who would be driving for us behind that. But Emma News and Cad...
Pool.
Pool, Totola, Dion, major sponsor. So we thank you very much for it.
Hey, I have an idea. Late, next year, we are gonna celebrate your 26th wedding anniversary.
So at the end of the day, we were happy to partnership with the village council. You did a very good job, coordinating stuff. I just hope you didn't miss out on opportunity to make lots of money.
Ladies and gentlemen, I suspect we missed another opportunity, so we are gonna pass around with a basket hour in a minute. We missed another opportunity.
Okay, winners, winners!
So, Emma said winners. So, I wanna start with winner number one. Teplat! Teplat! No! Winner number one, only one! Did you say, did you say Teplat? Did you say Providence?
Teplat.
I said Teplat.
She said, "Teplat". Ladies and gentlemen, she said, "Churchill". What about Peabush? Those who said Peabush, put up your hand! My god, that was weak. Those who said Peabush, put up your hand! Those who said Teplat, raise your hand! My popular demand, ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together for...
Winner is led by Councilor Angel Capil.
Let me hear the people of Mopac, so, yeah! So, congratulations to Mopac, Lower Mopac.
I want to know what happened when the judges passed our light. Never came on, what happened? Come on!
Hey! We want somebody to tell us what happened because we think something happened. Their lights were not working. Their lights were not working, they were not good, they were chipping.
Tell them all, and that is what happened! Only cut off the light!
No, Emma was the light on team.
They said it's the winner that did that. Ladies and gentlemen, next year got spared. We not starting in December, November, you know? We are starting in June. So, we are gonna start in June. Don't count out Teplat next year. We are going all the way. Oh yeah, what on it? You know, they played a trick before us, the judges played a trick before us. Teplat had underground lights. You had to press a trigger, press a switch for it to come on, but they never came while we were there by the switch to turn it on. So that's why they did not see the beauty of it. Ladies and gentlemen, again, you want to commend Emma? Emma? Emma, put your hands together for Emma. The sauce. My god! Emma is involved in everything in the community. And you know what? Peabush should be proud of someone like Emma. Don't you think? We, we should be proud of someone like Emma. Emma is a household name in Dominica. And guess how it started, in a very, very simple manner? Something good to, to ve- peoples are, you know? Emma, tell us how it started. No, tell us how Emma was lacking. Emma tell us. She don't want to tell us. So, anyway, ladies and gentlemen, diaspora, diaspora. St. Croix, Atlanta, New York, New Jersey, St. Martin, where? Antigua.
Chicago, Chicago.
Chicago, Waterloo, St. Roy, St. Thomas. Well, St. Thomas, we don't have to call them anymore because they have been part of us all the time, right? They have been there all the time. And, and guess what? No, 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 no. Remember, we have Martinique, but we have England too. England! Ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together for the Brigidi, for the England Party! And you know, we have St. Martin also. Did we miss someone else? Martinique. Peabush. Guadalupe, we said Guadalupe already. Peabush, Tibo, everywhere supported us during our, our... China? Hey, you mean we had... Oh yeah, ladies and gentlemen, they said we have a China, Chinese here. So we have someone, we have represented is from all around the world, I should say. So thank you, everybody. Thank you for making it such a big occasion. And next year will be greater. Okay? So we want you to be part of the plan.
On behalf of Emma News, we say thank you all for doing, and we love you.
Tomorrow will be better than today. Don't worry, people, be happy. Thank to the almighty God for gracing us, giving us all the blessings, giving us good weather, health, strength and success. I want all the lower Mopac people to jump up with me!
I'm so standing!
I'm far Mopac, where are you? Nuga ye, nuga ye! Thank you all very much for supporting our Peabush, Dodan, and the Shanks. We have indeed a great activity.